Good morning. I'd like to remind you, in case you hadn't noticed, that today, September 10, the Community Foundation is sponsoring San Benito Gives. And they have matching funds for people who would like to donate to nonprofit organizations, matching funds from the Monterey Peninsula Foundation and the Silicon Valley Foundation, as well as some local donors. And I'd like to recommend that you consider the Friends of the Library as a worthy recipient for your gift, since we would care to, we would like to help the library enhance its technology, since we are growing so much with 445 children signing up for summer reading, with parents and teenagers as well, of course, adults. We had some crowded conditions, and we'd like to continue with our programs, which include book giveaways and upgrading technology for the library. And just as a reminder, I happen to bring a couple of flyers with a QR code and a hypertext link, although you can also find us on our Friends page, on Facebook, or on our website, sbcfriends.org. And you can possibly join us in our attempt to get donors to help us make our goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzy Castin?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board. Suzy Castin County employee. We have 14 business days prior to the expiration of our current MOU. I'm concerned. We've been on the SIU 521, I've been on the SEIU 521 bargaining team since 2013, always in hope of seeing a fair contract for our county workers in the community we serve. In the last couple of bargaining seasons, I felt little by little that we were moving forward, until now. This year, due to a late start and continual delays on behalf of the county, we're barely getting underway. I went back and looked at my 2017 bargaining calendar. We had a total of 12 meetings with the county negotiators. This year, we've only had three meetings, including the first meeting on July 17. That meeting was only two hours long, which consisted of introductions and a budget presentation. With only three more meetings on calendar and two of those being of limited time due to the county's scheduling, I'm wondering if we're going to be able to get this done before September 30. The county's negotiator told us that because of the class and comp study, which is currently in progress, the county is negotiating with their eyes closed, and that we're being asked to take a leap of faith, because we won't know the results for a few more months. These statements make absolutely no sense to me. Study or no study, our county workers still deserve to receive a fair salary increase. We all know what the class and comp study is going to show for our workers. The county should be trying to make some gains on that canyon-sized gap now, instead of fooling around by offering mere cash crumbs. We're not asking for the moon. We understand the process of the study. But in the meantime, life goes on, costs are increasing, employees are leaving for better-paying jobs, and you can barely hire good, qualified workers on the wage and benefits that you're offering. Please keep in mind, the agreement we end up with for this contract is in place for an entire year. Although it seems like a relatively short amount of time pending the anticipated results of the study, it still means one more year of retention and hiring problems, and one more year of employees falling farther behind. I'm hoping you are all aware by now of the outrageous rise in health care costs for 2020. For some reason, the county has a false sense of security because of a new plan that's being offered. Please note that this plan has a smaller network of providers. Not everyone's doctor is on that plan, nor are they willing to risk losing their established health care teams to make the switch. This may be a solution for some, but certainly not for all, and we hope people aren't forced into making the decision they'll regret, based on their inability to afford the increase of the current plan. In closing, I'll say this. We're looking forward to the results of the class and comp study. We appreciate the investment that the county has made. We understand there will be a lot of work, a lot of work to do to implement the results of the study, and that it will take time. But if the county is unwilling to give its employees any sort of a cola this year, then how do we take that leap of faith with confidence that the county is going to ever be able to realize any of the results? The current cash-only offer that's on the table doesn't help solve any issues. We're imploring you to give direction and authority to your negotiator to stop wasting time and to make a real offer that will help to sustain and maybe even retain your employees through the next year. Thank you.
Valerie Aglins?
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Valerie Aglins, Samon Batista.
I have been getting a number of calls, and I know Anthony Battello has also, about the traffic that is diverted off of the 101 Highway during busy times, and the flow of traffic through the little country roads around Anzar, Cannon, Cole, Brown, Merrill. And it is becoming so significant that people are considering moving. And so, I called Robert Reavis's office, and Amy said that to check the Caltrans website and see what the possibilities might be to interface there. So I did, and came upon a big, what, source of signage. And I'm thinking that if these are county roads, perhaps we have more control over it than needing to go through Caltrans. And we right now have one sign, no trucks, that was facilitated by Supervisor Battello. And this has added significant, what, it has stopped the trucks from coming down through those little bitty roads. And right now, PG&E also has a stoppage there for the next few weeks, working on a pipeline. And so, it is very, very significant impact to the residents. So I'm thinking that perhaps the Board could ask for the Public Works to look into signage that would deter people from going down the road, without saying you cannot go down the road. And so, I found a few different things here, which I will leave with Janet for reference. And I thought, we could really get creative and take care of this situation that weighs, and GPS is not willing to look at. So, and I think everybody would love the Board to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Quintana? Good morning, good morning, members, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Denise Quintana, and I've worked for the County of San Benito for over 17 years at the Department of Child Support Services. The work that I do to serve our community consists of establishing and enforcing child support orders, so that single-parent families can have financial resources to survive. The employees who currently work for the San Benito County here are here because we want to contribute to our community. We want to work locally, because we care about San Benito County, and we attempt every day to make it a better place. I've had to watch year after year as qualified workers, due to increased costs of living, leave our county to go work for surrounding counties for higher wages and lower-costing health care. At the Department of Child Support Services, we just lost a worker last month to Monterey County. We are down by four. This causes a disservice to our community, as our service levels decrease due to this vacancy. I see current employees struggling to make ends meet. You have employees with this county that are receiving Medi-Cal, because they qualify and because they cannot take the county's health insurance. I know of many county workers who work two jobs just to make ends meet. We are thankful for the class and comp study that is currently in the works, and we know that will show you what our workers have been telling you for years, that we are underpaid from our counterparts in other surrounding counties. But honestly, I'm not sure that our current workforce can wait for the class and comp study to be completed and implemented. Over my 17 years with this county, I've been on numerous bargaining teams, and we are 20 calendar days away from the expiration of our contract. And from what I hear, there is little movement from the county to address issues that have plagued our workforce for years. All that we are asking for at the bargaining table is the county to respect the work we do, help retain qualified employees within the county. Let's stop San Benito County from being a training ground. Thank you.
I have no other speaker, please.
Department head announcements, information only. Start off with our CAO, Ray Espinoza.
Yeah, I don't think we haven't, you have an announcement. Yeah, we have one out of
I wanted to introduce our new Assistant County Council, Joel Ellingwood. We're very pleased to have him join our county. He was a deputy county council fore from Humboldt County for several years. He also has extensive land use experience, including with Abbott and Kinderman in Sacramento. He has a background, before he went to law school, in planning with a master's in regional and city planning, I believe. So he wanted to just introduce himself and say hi to, welcome to the Board.
Good morning, members of the Board, and members of the public. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be of service to San Benito County. Thank you.
Any additional department head announcements? We're going to move the board announcements to the end of the meeting. Before we get started on the consent agenda, I do want to make a statement. You know, there's a lot of people out there today, and we have several items on this agenda that may spur some constructive debate. Please be courteous of each other's Please be courteous of each other's opinions. Respect the opinions, even if you disagree. Personally, and I'm speaking for the Board, I will not tolerate any obscenities nor disrespect towards anyone. So, we're all adults here. On these decisions we're making today, let's be respectful of each other. Thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there any items that wish to be pulled?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item number fourteen, put it to the next meeting.
Yes, we'll move fourteen to the next meeting due to the ad hoc committee
Recommendation.
Recommendation researching the matter much further.
Continuing matter.
I believe that's thirteen. Can you check that?
Correct, thirteen.
I believe it's thirteen.
Which one is it?
Is it thirteen? I apologize, Mr. Chair.
It's thirteen, Mr. Chair.
It's thirteen. Thirteen. Thank you.
We are going to move adopt resolution authorizing the county administrative officer to prepare all necessary documents for the Board of Supervisors considering to permanently close, vacate, and dispose of a portion of Nash Road between West Street and Monterey Street. This is the one that we will be moving to the next scheduled agenda. Any additional items that wish to be pulled?
They're pulling the Nash Road item.
Yeah, that's what's posted on the website. It's thirteen on the website. Yeah, it's thirteen. That's what the correction was. He did say fourteen, it was thirteen.
Okay, now, anyone else wish to pull anything?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull.
Sorry, I'd like to pull number fourteen, please.
Number fourteen? Okay. Any other ones?
I actually have someone else from the public that's twenty-two that they were considering.
Okay. Okay, fourteen and twenty-two will be pulled.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. We move to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions noted.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Sorry, thank you. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero? We'll start off with number fourteen. That would be pulled from Supervisor Hernandez. Adopt the resolution authorizing the CAO to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Economic Development Corporation. Supervisor Hernandez?
So, I'm moving to support this item, Mr. Chair, but with a slight amendment. It's not a big deal, but it's basically to clarify things. It's to direct the CAO to coordinate with the Board's negotiating team, which would include me and our admin Dulce regarding the finalizing the MOU prior to the execution. So it's basically, we're going to hash out the contract before we actually approve.
I have no problem with that addition. Supervisor Gilia? Supervisor Del Cruz?
No.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I've moved to...
We need to hear the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any public comment? Bring it back to the Board. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with item number four with a slight amendment stating to direct the CAO to coordinate with Board's negotiating team regarding finalizing the MOU prior to execution.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to ask Supervisor if you'd take a friendly amendment and to have this brought back on a date certain of our next meeting on the 24th, so we can get this moving.
I would agree, Supervisor.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero? We'll go to number twenty-two. This comes from our Resource Management Agency. We can start off, since it was pulled by the public, we can start off with public comment, if that's all right with the Board?
Sure, it's fine.
Matthew Thrasher?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Matthew Thrasher. I'm a resident at 1130 Bonneview Road. And I'm here to ask if you guys could reconsider the speed bumps that are being tentatively agreed upon on our street. The reason being is that when we, as a group, initially came to talk about this, we were going to city council meetings and stuff like that, we were in contact with Mr. Medea. And the general consensus that we had was that we would have preferred to have had an access gate for EMS and 911 agencies to be able to access the Delgado housing development that was built at the end of our street. I don't know if many of you are aware or not, but our street's been there for a very long time, and it was a dead-end road for many years. Recently, it was opened, probably, I don't know, maybe about a year or so ago, to a new housing development that was being built. And so, like I had mentioned, most of the people on the street would have preferred that it stayed closed. But we were basically told by the city council members that it wouldn't be possible for that to be, that they weren't willing to fund it. And they just had one reason or another that they just really didn't want to do that. And so, recently, it came to some of our attention that we are actually a member of what's called the CSA. We didn't even know that that was a thing or that we were members of it and that we had funds to be able to fund projects on our street that maybe we could vote for or somehow have an influence in, other than just being told what we could or couldn't do. And so, I had a schematic that somebody had given me that showed where these proposed speed bumps were going to be placed and that they needed to be fifteen feet from our driveways and that kind of stuff. But I just was really wanting to ask if you guys could possibly consider putting the access gate for a couple of reasons. Not just because, I mean, yes, we do have the increased speed down our street from people driving down both construction crews and new residents to the neighborhood. But also because I believe that if we allow the people to continue down the street like they have been, being that our CSA is responsible for the maintenance of that road, speed bumps or whatever else is added to the road, it's going to come out of our fund from our CSA. There's many other things that they could possibly use that money for. And so, I was just asking if that was at all possible.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other speaker cards?
Good morning. I was coming to speak about the speed humps. I did get some calls. My name is Dece Slikis, and I'm one of the representatives of Bonneview Road. And so, the concern is that Bonneview Road is sixteen sixty-two feet in length. And so, there is a lot of residents that want the humps. I do understand there's some residents that are concerned with the humps because they would prefer to have the access gate. I don't know if that is still something that is still going to be able to be done. But with this being said, surrounding counties' policies for speed humps are three hundred feet between each. Our length, again, is sixteen sixty-two, so the recommendation that we would see is five humps. The Bonneview residents would like to see if we can get four to help decrease the increase of traffic that's coming down the road. There is a property, I believe it's called the Cuts Property, that is up for sale by El Cero, and that is going to be possibly new developments that are going to be coming in. So what the concern is, if we only get a limited of three humps and we get more development coming in, then we might be coming back to revisit this yet again because you're going to have more of the increased traffic that we're having issues with. As it is right now, we've had three mailboxes taken out because of the increased traffic. We also have had two trucks that were sideswiped. And there are five residents right now on the block that have decided to not walk their children to school because of the increase of traffic. So we just want to make sure we put this out there, that you guys are already aware that the safety is an issue on this road, and we just want you to take that in consideration.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards?
Well, I'll move first, being that it is in my district. Mr. Thrasher, we spent a lot of time with the city and with the county on trying to keep that access gate. We spent, I would say, at least four or five meetings between the city and the county. We did everything we could. This is a... A, you know, when we looked at that gate, I wanted the gate, but it was not voted on. It was voted on, and we decided not, the gate wasn't the thing to do. So, we're doing this instead with the speed humps. So that was something that we had, I had to figure out how to even provide the speed humps. So when I'm looking at the access gate, I would say that speed humps would be the substitute for that.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, if you're prepared to take a motion, I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt item number twenty-two, which is to approve the contract change orders, one through eight, for the county service areas eleven, five, eight, thirty-five, nine, and the road project, PWB nineteen oh three with VSS International. And I also direct that in the motion, we study briefly to not delay the contract if, within the scope of the contract, a change order to add a fourth speed hump would be practical. And... That's my motion.
You hear a second?
I'm sorry, if I could, to the maker of the motion, and also authorize the Army to issue contract change orders and any supplemental change orders as stated in the recommended action.
Absolutely, everything that's in the recommended action with the addition of the fourth speed hump, if it's appropriate.
All in favor?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi me?
Yeah.
Five, zero? Okay. We'll move on to our public hearing. County Council?
We're here for the hemp ordinance today. I'm going to read the title of the hemp ordinance for the record before we start. It's an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Benito, adding chapter seven point oh four to Title VII of the San Benito County Code relating to hemp entities. This ordinance is virtually identical to what was presented to the Board previously. I will state the main changes on page four seventy-one. Under the prohibition section, the changes that were approved by the Planning Commission are recommended for the Board of Supervisors' actions. Tightens up the ordinance and makes it clear that no person that engages in cannabis activities, cannabis business activities, or cannabis personal cultivation may engage in hemp activities. The exception to that is those engaged in testing. So you could engage in testing for both hemp and cannabis at the same time. If the Board would open the public hearing, take public comment, and then we're going to make a motion to accept introduction, waive further reading, and continue to September twenty-fourth at nine AM for adoption. I'm available for any questions.
We start off with a public comment? No public comment, bring it back to the Board for discussion?
Aye.
Good morning, Elia Salinas. The only thing I have to say is the state doesn't require anything that states that it has to be separate. Are we talking about cultivation itself? Are we talking about manufacturing? Because the state says, as long as it's a separate premise, you can... And so, it could be two separate rooms. One is THC and one is the CBD, and as long as the machinery is not cross-contaminated with each of it. So I don't understand why the county is going to go against what the state has already mandated. Thank you.
Got a question for legal on that?
Yeah, we can bring that back and explain that, but there was a policy decision to make sure that they're separate so that there's no risk of diversion.
Yeah, just so I am clear, the county can be more stringent on these regulations.
Yes.
It can't be more lax, correct?
Yes, unless the state has fully occupied the field in a specific area and we don't not believe that it's been fully occupied, that we can't have reasonable land use regulations. But I will fully address that at the next board meeting before you adopt.
Yes, ma'am. Supervisor Battello?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, a lot of counties have banned hemp completely. And, you know, I was in the school thought that we probably didn't need an ordinance for something that's legal, you know, a farm bill. But I think the county has done a very good job with this ordinance. It provided some flexibility with, you know, agricultural interests out there to be able to, you know, grow hemp. And it also protects areas that we need to protect. I think it was a job well done. And the only question I have, currently, we have a number of hemp operations. It's research hemp. When we adopt this ordinance, will they fall into the guidelines of compliance of the ordinance, research as well as commercially grown hemp?
I know that there is streamlined registration requirements for the research hemp. I believe in the ordinance that we're not making them comply with the same type of registration requirements as the other hemp entities. But let me go to the section pertaining to cultivation. I believe that they would still be... I'd have to double-check to make sure whether they'd be prohibited with the cannabis and the hemp at the same time.
Yeah, that's the only question I had. And the way I read this ordinance is that, correct me if I'm wrong, Supervisor Hernandez, who worked hard on this, is that all hemp operators must comply with this ordinance.
Mr. Chair, yeah, so to answer Supervisor Battello's question, it's specific to a for-profit entity. So I think it applies more, the exclusion is more for MOUs with universities and, you know, so it's a whole separate environment. And, yeah, I mean, we've worked really hard on trying to tighten up this rule. I mean, ultimately, this is a new industry and there's concerns. And, you know, on my end, I'm still fleshing out what it is, the mechanism that they're using to do the inspections. I know that that's, you know, it's funny, I actually just was forwarded an article today about certain... That's why there's certain industries or certain communities that aren't supporting hemp, because it's not because they're anti-hemp, they think it's a good thing. But how do you separate the two? The distinction between cannabis and hemp? It's a lot more complicated. And in the least, it's very expensive if you really want to go down a very, very clear route where it's pretty obvious when you do the testing. So, outside of that, right now, we're moving forward trying to support hemp, but we're making sure that we, to a certain extent, keep the conversation open about the inspection side and understanding how to better, you know, basically move forward with inspecting these locations and stuff. I've seen a lot of hemp coming around, you know, in my backyard and stuff. So, in the least, we've fleshed out enough that our motivation is to support it.
Yeah. So just so we're clear, it sounds like there's two different avenues. One is research, and that is a different criteria. And then you have for-profit or people that are farming it without the research. So there's two different avenues we can go down. Is that correct, Barbara?
And I can fully brief that, too. I believe that the registered, I meant, the hemp cultivators may be portioned to, subject to certain portions of this ordinance, but not all of them, too. So I can elaborate on that.
Okay.
Yeah, and before I give up the floor, I really think we have to kind of keep an eye on that portion. I believe everything is for profit. Whether you're researching it or not, it's all for profit. And I just want to make sure that, you know, it's all compatible within the areas as best we can. We are an agricultural county, and it's an agricultural commodity. But I think we got to be cognizant of, when we get into smaller acreage, and be careful about that. But it has protections in this ordinance, and I'm very happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from our Board members? Oh, which of the Board?
I'll make a motion and continue the item to September twenty-fourth.
And accept introduction and waive further reading.
With the waiving of the... I'm on the wrong page here.
Yeah, accept introduction and waive further reading, continue to September twenty-fourth at nine AM.
With the introduction and waive further reading and continue the item to September twenty-fourth.
Second, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Nine AM.
Aye.
Five, zero? Go on to the second item from the Resource Management Agency, dealing with steady hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board members. I'm Daryl Boyd with the Resource Management Agency, project planner. We need just a moment to load our slide presentation. And in the meantime, I think Michael Groves maybe had some... And in the meantime, I think Michael Groves maybe had some handouts that he was gonna give to, give to the board.
Okay, how are you?
Hello? Are you able to get those pens?
Yeah, this is perfect.
I don't have any, anything prepared. Very good, thanks. No, I don't think so. Well, they're supposed to start at around nine-thirty, but I don't know. I haven't coordinated.
Okay.
Is it possible to get some pens late this afternoon? If they do pick a load, we'll see if we can deliver it.
What's the ETA for setup? Do I have time for one minute?
Okay, great.
Mike, do we have one minute break?
I appreciate it. Yeah, I left a text with you, but she didn't get back to me.
I don't even have a key.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, bye.
Ready?
Yeah, we can start. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll go ahead and, and get started with the presentation. Again, I'm Darryl Boyd, project manager on this project with Resource Management Agency. Of course, Harry Mavrogenis is our director. With me at the podium today, after I do about six slides, a kind of background overview, thirty thousand foot level, Michael Groves from EMC will come up and actually get down into the nuts and bolts and the technical details of, of the items that are before you this morning. So, this is an implementation project for the twenty thirty-five general plan. We've got five actions that we're requesting ultimately for the board to take after we go through, you know, testimony, deliberation, presentations, and so forth. Basically, there's a series of five related ordinances. The first ordinance is to amend Title Twenty-five to adopt the regional commercial C-three zoning districts. If the board adopts that ordinance for the C-three regulations, then the next four actions would be to actually apply the C-three zoning regulations to real property in four locations, four, four nodes that we'll get into in more, in more specifics in here in, in a moment. Because these five items are all projects under the California Environmental Quality Act, there's been an addendum that's been prepared for each one of those actions, so there's five addenda. And the five ordinances, the draft ordinances and the five addenda are all attached to, to the packet, the agenda item, as posted on, on Novus. A couple of other key points is that the result of, if the board adopts those five ordinances, there will be no physical construction, no development is actually a part of the project or would be approved by the adoption of those ordinances. Or to say it another way is that adopting the ordinances is not gonna allow anybody to go out, put a shovel on the ground, and start disturbing the dirt. That's, that's not a part of this. This is merely to put the regulatory framework in place so that then, in the future, development proposals could come in at the, at the separate nodes and go through the master development plan process or conditional use permit process.
With all due respect, can you repeat that?
Sure, the last, that last one? Yeah, so, so again, the, the last two bullets on this slide, Mr. Chair, is that, number one, adopting the ordinances will not allow anybody, as a result of those actions, to go out and do construction or development. It's, it's putting the, the framework in place, the regulatory framework in place, and establishing the rules, if you will, so that then, in the future, at any of these four nodes, that people could come in and apply for conditional use permits or go through the master development planning process that Mr. Groves will talk about in more, in more detail.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure that that's understood. There's been some misunderstanding about that as we've gone through the process. So, in terms of today, because this is the first time that the full board is getting a formal presentation on this, we've, we've characterized today, your meeting today, as, as a study session workshop to allow staff to present the, the C-three project and its various components. And then, actually, you would take final action on September the twenty-fourth. And one of the main reasons for that is, and we'll, again, we'll explain in more detail, is that when we went to Planning Commission in May with a certain set of recommendations based on testimony and discussion coming out of that meeting, there were some modifications that were proposed to the C-three district and two of the nodes that needed to go back to, under state law, needed to go back to the Planning Commission. We went back last Wednesday on the fourth, so this was a really quick turn from Planning Commission to today. But because of state law, the Planning Commission recommendations have to be included in the public hearing notice for your action, and so therefore, you can't take final action until the twenty-fourth, which means that we'll renotice, we'll do new notices in the paper within, and property owners within three hundred feet for the twenty-fourth, so that you can take action then on, on the twenty-fourth. So, just quickly, again, because there's a lot of attachments to the item in Novus, in addition to the draft ordinances and the addenda, you'll see that there's a copy of both the Planning Commission resolution from last, last Wednesday, September the fourth, as well as a copy of their resolution from back in May fifteenth. There's a, 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 a number of letters and correspondence. Some of those came in the end of last week. There's also another bundle of correspondence and two petitions that were presented to the Planning Commission previously, say, back in, in May. So, attached to the agenda item this morning is all the correspondence that we had received up until the item was posted on, on, on Friday. One other set of figures that's attached to the item is the general plan figures for, for your review and consideration. And again, Michael Groves will get into those in, in more detail here in a moment. This slide is, I'm not gonna go through all of these bullet points, but, Mr. Chair, this, this slide is really just to try to capture the process. Basically, we've been at this project for about fourteen months or so. The, the initial field work, actual technical work began last July, August. There's been a series of meetings with the property owners of the nodes to make sure that we're, we're understanding what their ideas were. We've had four meetings in front of the Planning Commission. The first one was back in October of last year, last fall. We took a set of concepts to the Planning Commission to get their early input, to make sure that we were understanding what their ideas were and their direction. Based on testimony and their deliberations, we went back, as staff went back, did some more homework, and came back then to the Planning Commission in January of this year with some additional information and a more revised set of, of, um, components to the project, if you will, the draft code and, and the maps for the, for the four nodes. We went to the commission in May of this year with formal recommendation. As I say, they adopted a recommend, a resolution recommending the board approval, but due to the modifications, we needed to go back to them last week, and so the board, I mean, the Planning Commission did recommend board approval at their meeting last week, and that's documented in the resolution included in your packet. So again, just by way of background, some of this, I think maybe I've already said, but, but when the twenty thirty-five general plan was adopted by the board in July twenty fifteen, one of the components, one of the pieces of the, the general plan was a new land use designation called commercial regional, among some others, but commercial regional is the one that we're dealing with this morning. And, and there were four nodes that were identified and tagged with the commercial regional designation. And again, Mr. Groves will go into that in more, in more detail. Because that's a new land use designation, the zoning code does not have a, a zoning district that implements that land, general plan land use designation. So that's really what we're presenting to you this morning, is the, a branded new zoning district, regional commercial C-three district, that's intended to implement the goals and policies, the vision of that commercial regional land use designation for the nodes along Highway one oh one. So here's the four nodes that we'll talk about this morning. At the north, we have Betabell Road. Again, all of these are at, at interchanges per, per the general plan vision and, and direction. And again, Michael Groves will go through these in more detail, drill down a bit more, but we've got Betabell Road, Highway one twenty-nine, Searle Road, which is really on what I would call the westerly side of, of one oh one. Betabell Road's on the westerly side. Then we've got the livestock one oh one node, which again, on the west side of, of one oh one, there by the, the Salesborne Arena. And then the last one is down by Rocks Ranch, which would be just northerly of, of the, of the Red Barn, and that one's actually on the, say, the southeasterly side of one oh one. So those are the locations of the four nodes. This slide captures the, at least the two key general plan policies that we're really trying to implement. That first policy there, and this is again, included in the various staff reports and documents in, in other places, but, but essentially, the, the new commercial regional nodes, the county's encouraged to designate those nodes and, and, and implement the, the vision. I would say that, that beyond these policies that are listed here, there's lots of other applicable, um, general plan policies that apply to the C-three district that, that's being proposed, but these are really the, probably the, the key, most important ones. I would draw the board's attention to, in that first paragraph in policy five dot three, about halfway down, I think it's about the fifth or sixth line, you'll see the words "design review" there. And that's a key component of this new district, is that this will be the first zoning district where the county will actually be reviewing projects, not just for meeting setbacks and meeting height requirements, but actually looking at what are the materials that are being proposed? What are the colors that are being proposed? Because in that second policy, the idea is, is that, is that each of these nodes would become, say, a, a place, if you will, along Highway one oh one. And so the intent is, is that they would have a unifying design theme, you know, again, based on either style, materials, colors, and so forth. And, and so that's really the nature of these regional commercial nodes. The last policy there is really important because that last policy is saying what the nodes will not be. And I think part of the, I don't want to say confusion, but, but part of the controversy or perhaps misunderstanding has been with this project is, is to what really do we mean by commercial regional nodes? For those of us who deal with planning terms and jargon all the time, we, we sort of have an understanding of what we mean when we throw the technical words around, and, and when you, and, and for some people, they might be envisioning that what's being proposed is going to be, say, the, the Gilroy Outlet malls, or say, the strip commercial that you might find along Highway one oh one on the, you know, south end of, of Hollister or, or San Felipe Road just south of twenty-five. That's not what these are. This is not gonna be strip commercial. And again, I think as Mr. Groves goes through the, the details, hopefully that will become more apparent, but this last policy's really what, what these nodes will, will, will not be. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to Michael Groves to actually take you down into more of the nuts and bolts of, of what we're talking about this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Michael Groves, president of EMC Planning Group. Thank you, Darryl, for the introduction. And so, there's really three elements that Darryl's talking about that occurred with regard to this nodes, and it, as he said, we've been working at this for over a year now, and we're really pleased to be here in front of the board and have the board consider this item. Again, your actions will be taken on the twenty-fourth and not today. Today's more of a workshop, so you understand what the, the material is in front of you. And the three basic pieces, as Darryl started to describe, are the actual C-three district. Because the general plan was adopted in fifteen for regional commercial nodes, there was no regional district in the zoning code. So there was nothing really to implement these projects in the zoning code. So zoning has to be consistent with the general plan, and so we are now creating the C-three zone that will essentially implement the twenty fifteen general plan regional nodes. I was involved in preparing the general plan for the county, so I was involved in a lot of the hearings and, and have a lot of background with it, so if you have questions about what happened in that time, please feel free to ask. The next piece of it was, after we implement the, the actual code section, is to set the boundaries for each one of those nodes. And so we have gone about creating maps and setting boundaries for those nodes. And the last one is for the board to rezone those particular boundaries with the actual C-three designation. So, let's talk about the code a little bit first. The new code that we're proposing has essentially four levels. It has by right, it has site plan review, and then it has planning commission review for a use permit, planning commission review for a master development plan. So by right, the only thing that's in the by right component of it is essentially agriculture, and those things related to agriculture. The site plan review component of it is an administrative review, staff level review, which is essentially public parks, playgrounds, open space. So it's limited to things that are, that are not your typical development proposal that are in front of you. Everything else has been moved to conditional uses and master development plan. The reason for that is both the Planning Commission and the public, through this process of public hearings that we had with the Planning Commission, essentially requested that we have planning commission scrutiny over all development that's gonna occur in these nodes. And so essentially, that's how the, the code evolved over time from last August to now in, in terms of its development, by the public input that we received and the Planning Commission input we received. So essentially, as we walk through this, you'll see that the Planning Commission will have a scrutiny over all the development that occurs in the nodes unless it's agriculture or a public open space or park. Let me just go back real quick. The other thing I wanted to mention is each one of the, the portions of the code has development standards for each one of these nodes, and it also has special regulations for each one of the nodes. Special regulations being design themes and those types of things. So I'll talk a little bit about that. So I'll talk a little bit about that. The other component that I want to mention that's really important to this is the master development plan component. We envisioned that each one of these nodes would go through a master development plan. Essentially, what, what does that mean? And, and first, the other piece of it that was added to the code through the public process was the line that's at the top. If the proposed development includes one acre or more or a mixed u- a mix of uses or use types, um, in any node, a master development plan is required. And so that is a fairly low bar. It, it means that essentially you're going to have to do a master development plan if you're doing anything that has more than one use or it's greater than one acre. Other than that, you have to get a use permit from the county, which means you have to go to the planning commission for the use permit. A master development plan, you also have to go to the county planning commission for that. So the master development plan i- includes comprehensive development plan. Essentially, it's a, an overlook of what's going to happen on that node, uh, in a comprehensive way. Now, there's possibility you might do that in phases. So you might have comprehensive being, we're going to do this now and we may do something later, but we don't know what that's going to be and that's a, a later study. But it would still have to come back for a master development plan. Each one of the, we, each one of the master development plans will have a design theme, development standards and a marketing plan. There's also clustering required on, on the developments. It's essentially, we're encouraging some of the, uh, the node areas to be in open space and some of those areas to be clustered so that the development is, is pulled together in a way that's most beneficial to the, to the layout of the land. Uh, we're also requiring lighting, landscaping and a sign, signage program. Uh, the idea that you have a master development plan will help streamline the approval process later. So once you have a master development plan, you can come back with your lighting plan or whatever it is that for your building permit, those things can be determined based to be consistent with that plan or not consistent with that plan by the planning department. And another big item that was added based on public input and the planning commission's direction was the, the requirement for, for, uh, proof of sustainable water supply. So if you look at this, it requires a water source sufficient to serve the uses and uses identified in the master development plan or use permit shall be submitted with the master development plan or use permit application for review and approval by the planning director. This could come in the form of a will serve letter from the water purveyor or for onsite water, a hydrogeologic report with well springs or surface water locations and sustainable production yield tests. So, and that would be reviewed by the, the environmental health director. So again, that was a component of going through this public process and adding that component to the code and now it's, uh, one of the requirements of the code. So when somebody walks in the door with their master development plan or their use permit application, they have to walk in the door with their proof of water. Special res- regulations for each node and then project specific sequel review will be required for each master development plan or use permit. And one final note is the auxiliary uses such as, um, accessways, uh, water tanks, the water lines, those types of things can be done outside the node boundaries. Usually it's a typical type thing for connection to the node boundary. Some of the protections that we have, uh, it prohibits removal of, uh, protected oak trees. It's got the strictest lighting standards that we have in the county in this code section. Uh, we have riparian setbacks in the code section, no development over 30% slopes. Again, just talked about sustainable water supply requirement and encourages clustering. Development limits in the node, and we'll talk a little bit more about this when we get to the sequel component, but it's 85,000 to 100,000 square feet of retail commercial, 125 hotel rooms at 750, uh, square feet and 30 residential units at no more than 1,400 square feet for each one of the nodes. Each node is required to have a design theme. I mentioned a marketing plan. Why a marketing plan? One of the things we talked about with the board during the general plan process and also with the planning commission was the idea of marketing San Benito County. You drive up and down Highway 101 and you are in Santa Clara County and all of a sudden you're in Monterey County, you didn't know you went through San Benito County. So the idea is to have something along the highway, information centers or whatever, so people can actually know that there's a, a wine industry in San Benito County and agricultural industry, et cetera. So it's just, it's just sharing about what the county is about. We will also have regional signs to promote the county commerce and tourism.
I hate to interrupt you, but I will anyway. If you go back to the C three district code limitations, um, the development limits per node, 85,000 to 100,000 square feet, retail commercial, 125 hotel rooms at 750 square feet. That is contingent on everything. I mean, water has to be there. I mean, this is, once again, I just want to make sure we all understand, this is no guarantee. This is, they still have to go through the whole process and the natural resources have to be available in order for this to occur.
Right, they have to go through a development permit process with the county, which means a use permit or master development plan with, uh, the county planning commission's review, which is of course, appealable to the board. And that review has to include a sustainable water supply and the resources available to it. Again, we were attempting here to put a cap, uh, within each node on what the limits of development were. And this cap is about a quarter, and I'll say this again, but it's about a quarter of what the actual certified environmental impact report for the general plan analyzed. So we cut the, the actual development rights, uh, by three quarters in the code.
Thank, thank you, sorry for the interruption.
Where was I? I'm just joking. Uh, the C three node district, uh, it shall integrate displays dedicated to the marketing of San Benito County tourism. So that's where I left off in terms of talking about trying to promote, uh, some of the themes, the art, the agriculture, the wines, et cetera, and the products of San Benito County. Let's talk about each one of the code, uh, the node areas and, and how that code relates to it. So the C three code now has in it four different, uh, nodes. And those boundaries have been put onto a map and I'll talk a little bit about it. Betable being the first at the north end of the county. The node is 29 acres. It's a flat site adjacent to San Benito River near the Sergeant Creek. It's a mid-century roadside theme. Uh, the designs, uh, are to minimize the visi- visibility, uh, parking lots and buildings where feasible and, and attempt to do some clustering at the north end is encouraged, at least initially. So again, it's 29 acres, mid-century roadside is the theme. This is the, this is the actual node boundary in red. Some pictures, it's obviously adjacent to the RV park at the north end of the county. And, uh, when you take your action on the 24th, uh, you will be considering the addendum to the certified 2035 general plan final EIR. So the addendums that, that Darryl talked about are an addendum to that certified final EIR. Uh, you will then look at adopting an ordinance, uh, based on your review of the addendum. And that ordinance will be to rezone the area that's mapped on, on the node that you just saw. So it's basically a zoning map amendment. Again, there's no physical development proposed as a part of these rezonings. Highway 129 zone change. It's 33.1 acres. It's bordered by Highway 129 and Cyril Road. It slopes up to the west from Highway 129. The theme is early farmstead. Uh, special regulations are hillside adjacent to 129 to be left open and then protect the upland habitat. You can see the node area. Uh, it's, uh, again, 33 acres. Uh, it's on both sides of Cyril Road and both sides of, uh, 129. And, um, also I added in a map here that shows the, the ownership. It's the only node that has multiple owners. And so it gives you a sense that there's, uh, several different owners in here in this particular node. So this might be a case where somebody comes in for, uh, a master development plan for their component or their portion of the land and doesn't include all of the land in the node.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, on the 2.5 acres, uh, that, from my understanding, was always zoned commercial. It was zoned, uh, prior to my time, uh, and approved. Is that the case, Michael, you remember?
Yes. Yeah.
It's a resort.
It is.
Yeah, and, and so this is a bri- uh, bring, uh, design conformity to that whole area. And, uh, you know, so that, that's a, a good thing. Okay, thank you.
Some pictures of that location. And then again, uh, you'll consider an addendum when you take your actions on the 24th with a zoning map amendment. Rocks Ranch zoning change. 77.3 acres. Uh, there's a lower and upper site for this. Uh, there's a lot of tree cover along this particular node, along Highway 101. There's a creek that runs along there, so there's a lot of vegetation that screens the node. Uh, the lower side is adjacent to San Juan Road, US Highway 101 interchange. So it's got very easy access on and off of Highway 101. Um, it's an old California village theme. Uh, special regulations, buildings and signs on the upper portion of the site shall be nestled into the hillsides and trees and not visible from Highway 101. A single larger building may be included on the upper site. This is the actual node designation boundaries. You can see the 101 interchange. And some pictures. And again, the same, consider the addendum to the certified 2035 general plan final EIR and make a zoning map amendment or a rezoning. Again, no physical development is proposed or approved as a part of the rezonings. Livestock 101 zoning change. The node boundary is 159.3 acres, um, partially developed with livestock facilities and three houses. Uh, it's had commercial zoning since the 50s, the 1950s on this property. About 16 acres of the property is zone C two within the node. Uh, the theme is working ranch. And, uh, the, the big issues there to, to really settle in with the planning commissioner are compatibility with adjacent uses and special provisions for use of coal road. So those are the things we'll need to look at as that, as that comes forward or when it comes forward. This is a, a, a boundary map for it. Some pictures. And again, uh, consider the addendum and make a zoning map amendment or rezoning of the property and no development is approved by that rezoning. Sequel compliance. Uh, again, I mentioned to you that the, the board of supervisors certified a final EIR in 2015. So an addendum, uh, you can see the sequel guidelines section, uh, cited above. But an addendum to a certified EIR may be prepared if, if only minor technical changes or actions are necessary. An addendum need not be circulated, uh, and the decision-making body shall consider the addendum with the final EIR prior to making the decision on the project. So again, emphasizing that with you as a board to make sure that you consider the addendum and review the addendum prior to making any decisions, uh, on the zoning actions, either the C three code section, the new code section, or the rezonings of the nodes. The addendum prepared for each node and C three node, essentially, uh, we had, so we have five different addendums, uh, that are all prepared and we went through that process on purpose so that we could analyze whether or not there was any new or sustainable, sustainably more severe impacts, uh, on these node areas than we already had analyzed in the 2035 general plan. And we found, general plan EIR, and we found that we did not have, uh, any new or substantially more severe impacts, uh, as we went through this analysis than we had already analyzed in the certified 2035 general plan final EIR. So with that said, we went through and looked at, well, is an addendum necessary? And we felt an addendum was necessary because the acreage had changed from what we had analyzed in the general plan EIR. Uh, the acreage went from 126 to 298.5, 298 acres point five. So that acreage change was a change. And so we included that in the addendum. However, if you look at table 3.7 in the general plan EIR, it identified 126 acres of commercial regional area, but it had a floor area ratio of point eight. That floor area ratio of point eight gives you about 4 million square feet of commercial regional development is what we analyzed in the EIR. So all of the acreage went up, the development potential went down. If you remember what I told you about what the code limitations are, the code limits it to just under a million square feet. So it's essentially less than a quarter of the overall development potential is limited by the code. So, uh, and, and no node boundaries were defined, so that was the other thing. We were defining the node boundaries as part of this, uh, part of this process. C three code establishes specific boundaries for the nodes, which you've seen on the maps. And, um, C three code limits development capacity to 235, 750 square feet per node for a total of 943,000 square feet. So that 943 compared to what was analyzed in the EIR at 4 million plus. Again, reminding everybody that this is a programmatic level EIR that was done for the general plan, so you have different levels of environmental documents. And why we emphasize that is the ju- the 2035 general plan final EIR was at a programmatic level, looked at big picture, population, employment, looked at all the land uses in the county, uh, on a, on a, on a full-scale basis in terms of the level of designation for a general plan. And then the next level of environmental review be a project-specific level. And so when those use permits come in or master development come in, they will have a project-specific level environmental review done at that time. So that way, you're doing an actual environmental review on a project that you know is being applied for. You know what it, what the contents of that project are. So that's an important point in terms of going program level to project-specific level on the environmental document. And then the last piece on the PowerPoint to share with you is the, the general plan clerical mapping corrections. And this has been a big discussion that's gone back and forth with the planning commission and the board, uh, over the le- course of the last year. So, and, and I, and I, and I want to say it's the last piece in the PowerPoint, but it'll be your first piece that you take action on, on the 24th. So when you see your agenda for the 24th, you'll see this item come up first because it has to do with correcting the general plan maps. And that's really what you should do first before you get into the zonings. So the, the corrections, uh, have to do with the four regional nodes, uh, the land use diagrams. And I'll show you those diagrams in a minute. And again, this is the last piece to wrap it up. It was the intent of the planning commission of board supervisors based on, um, all of the evidence in the record to delete a node originally identified at state route 156 101 and add a node at livestock 101. So what happened? Prior to the certification of the, uh, general plan EIR and adoption of the general plan, the planning commission held a public hearing on July 1, 2015, during which the recommendation was made to the county board of supervisors to delete the node at the intersection of 101 and state route 156. As a result, general plan policy LU 5.3 was edited to direct the, the exclusion of that particular node. Due to a mapping error, several figures, including figures 32, 33, 34 and 36 within the general plan, still included the 156 node when it was, uh, presented before the board. The planning commission further recommended that this node be moved to livestock 101 location. A motion was passed that recommended approval of the general plan, general plan EIR with the exclusion of the 101 156 node and the addition of the livestock node. So that planning commission recommendation went to the board. The board at their hearing, uh, basically said, "We want to have 156 101 removed per the planning commission recommendation and we'd like livestock 101 added." So some of the confusion was there didn't seem to be a lot of paper record of this because the maps were wrong and everything in the policy referred to the maps. So if the maps are wrong, then you don't have the right direction. So we went back to the hearing, uh, both the video and the, and all of the written testimony that occurred. And it was very clear by all the evidence in the record that the board, again, adopted the removal of the 156 101 node and the addition of the livestock node. So with regard to these clerical errors, county staff is now, uh, in the process, want to correct those errors. want to correct those errors by moving the incorrect dots off the map and putting the correct dots on the map. It's really pretty simple. But it's simple, but at the same time, the policy refers to the maps. So that's why it's important. So let me just show those to you real quickly. You can see here is the original diagram 3.2. And you can see it has beddable 129, 156, 101, and rocks ranch. The corrected map has the four nodes that we're talking about now, beddable 129, livestock 101, and rocks ranch. 3.3, the same thing. It's got rocks ranch and 156. The corrected map has livestock 101 and rocks ranch. The next one, the original map, again, has 156 101 still on it. The corrected map has taken 156 101 off. And the original map for 3.5, again, it's got beddable 129 and rocks ranch, but it doesn't have livestock on it. And it had removed 156.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question, please? Mr. Chair, Michael, just to point out, and I think for the record, I have the general plan up in front of me on the computer. The addition to the text on the left-hand side there is an addition for the presentation.
It is.
In the general plan, it's literally just a dot. It doesn't actually say 101. Yeah, it's just, I just wanted to point that out to the audience. When you look in the general plan, it's literally just a dot. It doesn't have the name. And then when you look at land use 5.3, it specifically says, "And quote and exclude intersection of US Highway 101 and state route 156."
Right. Correct. Thank you for, that's really good information for the public as well as for the rest of the board. The wording on the side where I've identified, those are words I added for this PowerPoint. So that's not what the map looks like in the general plan. So thank you for pointing that out, supervisor. So again, it just shows you the corrections. So these are the revised maps. And then there's one more essentially where you see 156 is still on it. And then on the corrected map, it has the correct four nodes. And the reason I did add the language on the PowerPoint is just so people could actually see what each one of them were. It's hard to tell if you're just looking at a map with dots on it. And then finally, this is the actions that you'll be looking at on the 24th. Remember I said to you, the clerical mapping corrections will be listed first on your action items. So that's up at top. You'll have five resolutions, one for each addenda that is being considered to be attached to the certified 2035 general plan EIR. And then you'll have an ordinance to drop in the new C3 code section. And then you'll have four ordinances, each independent from each other, independent actions from each other, one for beddable, one for 129, one for rocks, and one for livestock 101. And then a resolution for the board to make findings of facts regarding their actions on the regional commercial nodes. And again, remembering no physical development occurs with the rezonings. And all future development proposals will require a separate review and discretionary action by the planning commission and the appropriate project-level sequel review. So I'm available for any questions from the board now. And then I'll be available after a public testimony for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
I would first like to get some clarification from our legal counsel. You know, there's a lot of people out there that might not know the entire process. So we're doing this in two steps. And can you please explain why we're doing it in two steps and what we're voting on today versus what we're voting on the 24th? This way, it's clear to everyone.
Yes.
Please.
A zoning ordinance only requires one public hearing. And that public hearing notice has to be published after the planning commission's recommendation is received. So there was no time to publish the public hearing with the planning commission's recommendation for today's date. So all the actions that will be taken by the board formally for approval of this agenda item, if the board approves, will be happening on the 24th. And there is going to be public notice that's published with the planning commission's recommendation for the meeting of the 24th. So all the action items are on the 24th. Today was noticed as a public hearing in an effort to have as much outreach as possible to the public so that we are having two public hearings, which is unusual for zoning ordinances, but it's in an effort to have as much outreach as possible.
And just for the record, myself along with Supervisor Battallo did think it would be wise to do this twice. And reason being is because we want to make sure that everybody understands what we're voting on and what we're talking about. And this has been going on, you know, when you look at what was the public outreach, this started in July, August of 2018. So I just want to make sure that everybody completely understands what is happening today versus what is happening on the 24th. So I will now open this for public comment first, and then we'll come back and bring it to the board. But prior to that, would you like to take a quick recess?
If you don't mind, I'd like to use the restroom, Mr. Chair, so I can be here for all the public comment.
You cannot, sir. Sorry.
We'll take a brief recess, please, for roughly come back at 10:42.
10:42.
Okay, we're going to open up for public comment. And as I said before, courteous of each person's opinion, respect, each other's opinions, even if you disagree. And lastly, I will not tolerate any obscenities or disrespect towards anyone. Marty Richmond, please.
Good morning. Marty Richmond from the city of Hollister. And the city of Hollister is part of the county, despite of what some people may think. I want to, unfortunately, I will have to start this off with a dirty word. The word is money, okay? I know that a lot of people look on it as a dirty word. I have no financial interest in this, in any of these projects, in any of these lands. I don't even know of anybody who has financial interests that I know of, anyway. No friends of mine, no associations. But it is about revenue. And it's a dirty word until you need it. And much of the revenue that we need supplies the things that people in the county must have or want, including clean air. So when we have to give up an old generator because it runs perfectly because of the new air quality requirements for diesel engines, someone has to pay for it. When we have to have cleaner water, not just clean water, but cleaner water because we get new requirements from the state about the chromium levels and things like that, someone has to pay for it. And often, because we have a limited amount of revenue, it's very difficult for us to pay for it. So earlier today, a member SEIU came up here and talked about child protective services and things like that. Someone has to pay for it. Often, the people who need child protective services are not capable of paying for it themselves. The tax structure is built in to the state regulations. We don't get to change that. We don't. And if you ask most of the people here in the audience, my guess is most of them would not want to give up Prop 13 if given the option. And so they don't want to increase their property taxes. I don't blame them. I got Prop 13. I don't want to increase my property taxes. But the revenue has to come from somewhere if you're going to provide the services. The county is a service providing organization. I don't know the exact number. My guess is seventy or seventy-five percent of your budget, your general fund budget, goes to personnel in one way or the other, okay? And so revenue is important. And billions of dollars come marching down 101 in the wallets and in the plastic and in the phones of the people who drive through there and don't even stop. And we don't even give them an opportunity to stop. There's nothing there for them. The big fight will come in the future, but we need to at least realize that we need this opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Good morning. Mary Vasquez Edge from San Juan Baptista. I'm here as an individual to ask you from the bottom of my heart, think of the city of San Juan Baptista. We rely on tourism. That is our livelihood. And so all I'm asking is, you're going to be hearing a lot from a lot of individuals, their feelings. And I just feel that we need to have you just think really hard about this before you make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. What was the last name? I'm sorry. Walton?
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Zachary Walton, and I am here on behalf of the owners of the properties that are subject to the commercial nodes. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I just want to touch on a few items. First, I would like to thank staff for their diligence. They have put together quality documents for your review, and we thank them for that. Second, we can appreciate the concerns that members of the public and pork may feel about change and commercial development along the 101. But the policy issue of whether to encourage development through commercial nodes has already been resolved. The board made its decision in 2015 when it updated the general plan. What's in front of you today is the zoning code to implement the general plan. To the extent that members of the public object to the commercial nodes, they're really objecting to the general plan, which you have already adopted. Third, I would like to touch briefly on the status of livestock. I've gone through the record in great detail, including the videos of the planning commission and board of supervisors' hearings in 2015. And I can assure you that livestock was approved as a commercial note at that time. It's unfortunate that a clerical error was made and that the maps don't reflect that fact. But a clerical error does not take precedence over the legislative decision of the board supervisors. Fourth, pork's main legal challenge to the zoning code involves the California Environmental Quality Act and their allegation that the county is piecemealing environmental review. Now, piecemealing refers to breaking one large project that is subject to SEQA into smaller parts in order to avoid environmental review. But the opposite of that is happening here. The county engaged, or I'm sorry, the board certified a comprehensive environmental impact report when it adopted the general plan in 2015. Staff has evaluated the zoning code under SEQA and determined that the EIR Staff has evaluated the zoning code under CEQA and determined that the EIOR for the general plan is adequate for that purpose. They did so because the general plan expressly contemplates adopting a zoning code like the one before you today. And there will be additional environmental review when the county considers applications for master development plans in the commercial nodes. And at that time, there will be a site-specific analysis that takes into account the actual footprint of the proposed development, including an analysis of water supply, biological species, and cultural resources. The county has spent a lot of time and effort when it updated the general plan. The zoning code in front of you is the next important step in implementing it, and I encourage you to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Andy Shaw Coron. I live off of Cole Road on Ricardo in Aromas. And I want to talk about the nodes and put it in the context of cancer. Now, we just heard that when you adopted the general plan in 2015, that now it's water, polluted water under the bridge, and there's nothing that people can say or do about it. That's really nonsense. At every step of the way, as circumstances change and the community gets involved, the people have the right to have their input and make decisions. Traffic has changed tremendously since 2015. Our water supply has changed tremendously since 2015. So whatever you thought about these nodes that you had back then can be reevaluated either by you or by the people. Now, we've recently heard that each of these nodes talk about cancer again, that when you look at these things and you review as to whether it's a good thing or not and whether the public should approve it or not, we see that, just like cancer, the projects are changing. Now they include housing elements in the projects. So now there are gonna be more traffic associated with each of these spots. And we've talked to many people in the community, and they're not, they didn't feel like they were part of the, of input on this in the beginning. And they now know each day, each day as they see the traffic jams and each weekend as they see the traffic jams, that that will get worse with this development. Many people in the area have lost their wells, and they know that the overdraft issues are continuing to become more severe. So that's another impact in our area. I was at the march yesterday with the Amamutsan people, about five, close to 500 people that marched from San Juan to the Bedabell site, which is part of their sacred site of Euristoc, as is the 129 site, where they believe the world began. And that, so this corridor starts there and continues to the rocks, where Caltrans said that it should qualify for part of the National Historic Register. It was that important spiritually and historically. And I don't think any of that has really been evaluated as you looked at your general plan. So you could change your mind and say no to turning these to commercial areas. We have no confidence that the planning review will do anything. We heard the head of the planning commissioner say he believes that property owners should be able to do whatever they want on their property, which shows he doesn't understand planning. And so, given all of that, you can do the right thing, or otherwise, the people themselves will referendize the issue and take it out of your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. What was the name of them, sir?
Thank you. Karavank, San Juan Batista, and a San Benito County resident. We don't need gas stations, fast food restaurants, cheap motels, hotels, neon signs, and up to 65-foot highway signs to mar our beautiful rural landscape. Make no mistake, the C3 Zone District authorizes this type of development, even if details are to be reviewed later. The intersections of Highway 129, 156, and Rock Road, Rocks Road are all gateways to our National Registered Historic City of San Juan Batista. They're also gateways to three state parks: Fremont Peak, San Juan Batista, the Mission Plaza, Hollister Hills, and then there's the Pinnacles National Park and the National De Anza Trail. The county should capitalize on existing vistas of farm, agricultural, and rangelands that are our cultural assets. How many counties within striking distance of large metropolitan areas can boast such natural beauty? This unique and quickly disappearing rural experience sets the stage for an authentic experience in our historic town as well as the county at large. We don't need fake Disneyland themes drawing motorists away from our economic livelihood. The general plan was ill-considered, and it should be amended. Property only, owners only have rights given to them. It is the county government's obligation to zone the land in the best interests of the entire community. You should also have a letter from the San Juan Batista City Council opposing this plan, unanimously agreed upon with one recusal. Let's capitalize on our unique cultural landscape and heritage. And as Mr. Battello said, we're an agricultural county. Let's, this be our driving economic force. Let's not go for what everyone else already has. Let's be different, because once we lose this resource, we can never get it back. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman, supervisors. My name is Anne Marie Sayers. I live in Indian Canyon, and it is the only federally recognized Indian country for 350 miles long coastal California. I've opened up my great-grandfather's trust allotment for all indigenous people whom are in need of traditional lands for a ceremony. And we have Maori people, Aborigines, people from all over the world that come up for ceremony. And 20 years ago, I worked with Caltrans on the rocks when they were widening Highway 101. That is a very sacred area. The American Indian did not get the right to practice their religion freely until 1978. It's like we're invisible. And to destroy sacred areas for commercial, I'm sorry, it's not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Tom Karas, and I live in Aromas. And I'd like to voice my objections to the commercial rezoning of the nodes along Highway 101 in San Benito County on the basis of aesthetics, traffic, and water. Hotels up to 65 feet tall, gas stations, shops, restaurants, and residences will permanently and significantly degrade the presently scenic corridor through San Benito County. This degradation is not mitigated by disguising the urban sprawl as theme parks and behind a screen of trees. The traffic congestion along Highway 101 in San Benito County currently provides an unacceptable level of service on weekends and during commute hours. Increased traffic at the access ramps due to the commercial development will inevitably lead to more traffic turbulence at the interchanges. This is especially true for the livestock 101 node, which is a direct entry in an already hazardous and curved section of the freeway. The not result of the commercial development is an increase in commute time for hundreds of thousands of motorists. The livestock 101 and Rocks Ranch nodes are on the Carlitos-Pajaro Valley groundwater basin. This basin has been in overdraft since the 1950s. This is causing seawater intrusion, which is headed toward Aromas. Increased production from this basin to support motels up to 30 residences, gas stations, shops, and restaurants will accelerate the overdraft and seawater intrusion. Monterey County residents will lose more of their domestic water wells and place the Aromas Water Company wells at risk. There must be a less destructive way to raise revenue for San Benito County. Therefore, I respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors does not adopt the commercial rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mary Shaw Coron, and then next would be Jackie Lopez.
Good morning. Mary Shaw Coron from Aromas. I'm reading the comments from Gina Paulini, a member of Pork who couldn't be here because of work. Preserve Our Rural Communities is very concerned about the county planning staff's recent 180-degree change in its position on the, quote, "clerical error" regarding the designation of livestock 101 as a commercial C3 node. Here's some history. On October 16, 2018, planner Darryl Boyd sent an email to Dan DeVries, Michael Groves, and Richard James stating that he could not find any documentation that shows livestock 101 was included as a fourth Highway 101 node and was designated as such by the Board of Supervisors. On October 17, 2018, Dan DeVries emailed Darryl Boyd saying, stating that the omission of livestock 101 from the 2030 general plan map was a clerical error. He asked Darryl to review the archived videos. On October 17, 2018, Darryl Boyd emailed county planner John Gerton requesting access to the county's video archives. And then on October 17, Darryl Boyd wrote a detailed email to Dan DeVries, Michael Groves, and Richard James stating that he had spent a couple of hours listening to the July 21, 2015 Board of Supervisors discussion of the general plan update adoption. Darryl concluded that he could not find any public record to substantiate the designation of livestock 101 as a fourth node. He also noted that, he stated that nothing in the official public record suggests a clerical error was made regarding the livestock 101 designation. Based on this research, the county staff determined that a general plan amendment for livestock 101 site was essential. EMC was tasked with preparing a general plan amendment and addendum, which later was presented to the planning commission on May 15, 2019 for adoption, and was unanimously adopted. On September 4, 2019, the county staff recommended reversing its position and asked the planning commission to rescind its previously adopted general plan amendment for livestock 101. Staff now claim that a clerical error was indeed made, but no evidence has been provided to substantiate this claim of a clerical error. Even some of the planning commissioners questioned this reversal, although they ultimately voted to rescind. Preserve Our Rural Community believes that the county's current proposal to identify livestock 101 as a commercial C3 node without the required general plan amendment would violate the State of California's land use law. Thank you.
Thank you, Lopez. And then it would be Jacob Morris Lopez.
Correction, please noted. My name is Jackie Morris-Lopez. I'm here today, Chair and Supervisors, as a constituent in District 2, which is Anthony Battello's district. I'm also here as a local San Juan Batista resident, longtime San Benito resident. I'm here because I'm in great opposition of the C3 nodes, commercial development, and any amendments that therefore follow. I agree, and in concurrence with the previous speakers, on behalf of their individual views, but also as a larger body called Pork, which is Protect Our Rural Communities, a nonprofit group, and also constituents of San Juan Batista. I agree with all of the aspects that they outlined for you, the water issues, the sacred ground, which is very special, and the fact that you are ignoring blatantly your local resources of natural attractions without any plaster walls or hotels or chain stores, that being the Pinnacles National Park, the San Juan Mission, the Fremont's Peak, and also we have a beautiful winery trail now in Tianaga Valley. My goal here is to employ upon you. I know that one aspect, I had dialogue with my supervisor, Mr. Battello, regarding these jobs that would come in. And I find it very curious that the planners are talking about no ground is broken, no shovels of dirt are turned, but yet they have a specific theme, commercial theme, for each node. And these nodes, to me, highly reek of commercialism and inauthentic sites when you have this beauty to, to behold. Now, where I'm going with the jobs that I discussed with Mr. Battello is that all these jobs are gonna be in the service industry, meaning, i.e., hotel, waitresses, cooks, maintenance workers on these facilities, and housekeepers. And did you know that the average income in San Juan Batista, I'll speak to that because that's where I'm a resident, is the max is $43,000, that's rounded off for a hotel worker. The current California hourly wage is $12 an hour. So how can these folks afford delivering these 30 housing units, which got sort of slid into these projects? And we were told at last week's planning commission meeting that these housing units would be for the workers. But then they went ahead a few minutes later and stated that these housing, this, this housing would be sold at market rate. So it's kind of contradicting their first statement, isn't it? They're not employee housing. These are for market rate. This is for commercial. This is for development. Now, going along with the jobs that are gonna be created by these type of service jobs, you had a whole crowd of SEIU workers here in your county that presented to you their lack of ability to work here because of low wages.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
My name is Jacob Mohammed. I'm, I'm a resident of Aromas. I moved here eight years ago for, from San Jose for this place's natural beauty and peace. Since then, it has gotten so much worse in terms of traffic. It has added, in eight years, it has added 40 minutes extra time to my commute to San I would like the county to focus more on the development of the public infrastructure, like roads, before approving commercial development like these. It was said that it would only draw traffic from the existing, you know, draw people from the existing traffic and won't add to it, but that's just absurd and nonsense, in my opinion. In my eight years, several of my neighbor's wells have dried, and we are seriously overdrafting from our aquifers. There's no water for the community residents, let alone for a lodge and a water park. Proof of sustainable water source, the water source might be sustainable for the commercial nodes specifically, but what about the community and the residents around it? From what we have seen over the years, the commercial development directly or indirectly depletes water from our aquifers, which has a direct impact on the residents. I understand that the county needs money, but this is not the way. The decision in favor of this could force people like me to move out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, once again, I'm Natasha Wist here, and I'm a resident of San Benito County. And what I'm asking, once again, is for the Board of Supervisors to follow the legal mandates of the state. And this is that whenever there is a major zoning change, like this is, from agricultural to commercial, an updated CEQA report is required. I don't think that by state law, a 2015 proposal, as Andy said, things have changed a lot since then, would qualify as an updated environmental impact report of water, traffic, air quality. So I think we should follow that mandate and have that done first for all these zones, if acreages. And then I understand we, we should also have two to be sold to private real estate hedge funds, which is what is happening, or is about to happen. And I actually talked to some people in, planners in surrounding counties, and told them what was happening here. And what, one planner told me, she said, "That would never happen in Santa Clara County, in Monterey, or Santa Cruz." So I assume that San Benito County is low line fruit for these big corporate real estate investors. Now, the board, you on the board are hired to further the interests of the public. So what I'm saying, I'm going to paraphrase what my supervisor, Mr. Medina, said, "Please respect the opinions of the people over, even though you might disagree unanimously against what we are saying." Thank you very much.
Lori. And then it'll be John Dykman.
Good morning. My name is Laura Yocapi, and I'm from Aromas. I want to thank all of you for your service. This is a very difficult job for you, and I'm sure you weren't looking forward to coming to work today. To address some of the issues, I think skepticism is the concept that I think a lot of the public has. I'm wondering if someone earlier used the comment of piecemeal, but I do wonder if the overall planning is not forgetting road, water, in the specifics when these people come up for applications. Is there even a possibility that you're going to be able to provide the road, traffic control, sheriff support, security, water? In addition, I found it very interesting that Val English spoke earlier on a subject of the complaints of residents in the Aromas area talking about people using the backroads and the problems that they're having with traffic spreading out into our rural area. I do oppose the nodes just because of the beauty. I think that there has to, I am not a planner, I am not a county planner, but I do believe that industry, Silicon Valley site locations would provide you many more tax dollars than small roadside attractions. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Dykman. And then Richard Witt. Did you say John Dykman? Yes.
Members of the Board, Supervisors, good morning. My name is John Dykman. I live in Royal Oaks, California, and I'm a member of Preserve Our Rural Communities. I wish to briefly state my opposition to the proposed attempt by the county to rezon four nodes on Highway 101 for commercial development. Despite being a blight on the land, a threat to wildlife, agriculture, and encroaching on the sacred lands of the indigenous Amamutson people, I think any attempt to rezon agricultural lands for commercial development that creates a water park to vampire critically overdrawn local aquifers is inherently flawed. How can this not be criminal? Please don't fall for the feel-good gobbledygook uttered by Mr. Boyd and Mr. Gross earlier in this hearing to convince you of the merits of this current, the current rezoning plan. I urge the Board of Supervisors to vote against the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Richard Witt. I live on San Felipe Road in the county. And I just wanted to make a little comment about the proceedings that I witnessed here. And I was at the Planning Commission meeting also and experienced the same thing, just about the attorneys representing landowners or business interests. And I'm a little offended when they, when they tell you what you can and cannot consider. And I would appreciate, I think that's kind of arrogant and inappropriate, and I would appreciate if they would just say, "In my opinion," then it would be fine, okay? And, but that as a resident, and as all these residents here, we can tell you what to consider because you work for us. When you, when you leave and you're, and you are residents of the county, you are our equals. When you come and sit in your supervisors' chairs, you are our subordinates. We are your employers, and we are who you work for. And so we can tell you what to consider, and I think I'm speaking on behalf of everyone. Consider every word we say. And as far as this development process here, it just seems to me, in my personal opinion, that this county is a goldmine. We have a beautiful place, we're, we are admired and by everyone that comes out here, and I think that needs to be protected. You have a very unique opportunity to, to come up with a new 21st century method of development that, that is appropriate and, and preserves this natural beauty, fertility, and, and everything we have here that people desire and want, that's why they come here. And I would, I would think that this is one of the biggest decisions that the county has ever made, to, to open the door to this development kind of out in our beautiful county. You know, not just a little San Juan, little Hollister growing, you know, but opening the doors out to the county. It's, it's one of the biggest decisions that's ever been made in this county. And I would, I would hope that, you know, that may be an inevitability at some point, but that, you know, and that you could just slow it down and say, "Whoa, our residents want us to take very careful consideration of this." And I would think that you could maybe come up with very severe restrictions on development using.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Next, next, please. Next, please.
It's three minutes, sir. It's three minutes. Sir, 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 sit down, please.
James Stark Wolf, and then it will be Adam Scow. First coach.
Thank you. I'm James Stark Wolf. I thought I was the great Wolf. Thank you today. On Sunday, I was a part of the Amamutson walk from San Juan Batista to Bedabell. And it was one of the best events of unity, of native unity. There were people from the Bay Area, from Los Angeles. Because of the nature of that pass and the importance to native people everywhere, it goes beyond the local tribes and the kind of support that was evident, and the kind of organization that went into 500 people walking on Sunday. So I think that it was the kind of event that left people with the feeling that they want to come back and, and preserve all the sacred sites and the inspiration of, of that I live in Vieira Canyon, grew up a lot in Salinas and Alasal, and I don't think we want another Prunedale just north, where, where you can't go anywhere on the weekends. And I don't want to go back to the 50s. I think we've come a long ways, and we don't need billboards, burma shave, cement dinosaurs. And I would say that native people from all over are, are moving into people of the 20, 2020s, and we don't need any more Santa Claus villages or any of that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Adam Scow. I'm a resident of Watsonville, another county, but we do share some groundwater concerns with the Pajaro Valley Groundwater Basin. One of the speakers mentioned it's already being overdrafted, and this is a huge concern for our region. If we continue to overdraft our groundwater, what are our prospects for an economic future or our ability to live here at all? Thinking 30 years down the road, 50 years down the road, 70 years down the road. So I want to echo the concerns from the residents about maybe this is not the right approach for economic development, because if we overdraft our groundwater, we're all in trouble. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, and thank you very much for being here. Thank you for working for the people. I'm going to read a short poem that expresses the essence of why I am involved in issues related to environmental injustices. Hope you like it, but most important, hope you learn from it. The title of the poem is "Song of the Earth." "It is lovely indeed, it is lovely indeed. I am the spirit within the earth, the feet of the earth are my feet, the legs of the earth are my legs, the bodily strength of the earth is my body's strength. The thoughts of the earth are my thoughts, the voice of the earth is my voice, the feather of the earth is my feather. All that belongs to earth belongs to me. All the surround, all that surrounds the earth surrounds me. I am the sacred word, words of the earth. It is lovely indeed, it is lovely indeed." That's on, it comes from the Navajo origin story, as told to Curly Mustache. My name is Emetrio Bruneda, three syllables, and I am from here, I am from there, I am from over, everywhere. I presently reside in Salinas, 10743 Country Meadows, which I'm only about five minutes away from node number one. And I am here to let you know that I stand in solidarity with, with Protect Our Rural Communities Sisters and Brothers. And I also want to remind you, as elected officials, your first priority is to work with el pueblo, with the people, not to work and, and give everything to the wants of the corporations. You're here to represent everybody, not corporate America.
Thank you.
Robert Rowe, and then it will be Jared McDonald.
Okay, thanks again, guys. I know it's a tough decision, you guys and the community. We've got a lot to say. I've written down a lot, I never get it in three minutes. First of all, the 101 node, the clerical error, I'd like to see the videos. It's been mentioned that there's videos out there. I think you should postpone approving a C3 zone for the 101 livestock until you see the concrete information that's out there that was spoken to today of the videos. I've been to many Planning Commission meetings over this issue and just, hey, if it's there, it's there. If it's true, it's true. Go ahead and approve it. But see the videos first, please. Otherwise, table it. On May 15, 2019, there was a motion by Planning Commissioner Eggers that we approve recommendation for these nodes on the understanding that there be a fiscal analysis recommended. I haven't heard that yet today. I guess we're just going to bypass that, so I'm asking you to do that. On Land Use Policy 5.3, you state that development is encouraged to contribute to the preservation of scenic areas along the designated scenic corridors. Sounds like an oxymoron to me, development and scenic corridors. Go to the San Benito County Planning Department and find out what the scenic corridor is. It talks about it in the general plan that we have a scenic corridor along 101. It doesn't describe, is it 40 feet from the center line of 101, or is it 400 feet? Please find that out, determine your avenue after that. Everybody talks about the environmental concerns up, up there, putting in hotels, 125-room hotels, and, and land uses with 30, 1,400 square foot units. I would like you to consider reducing that to 60-room hotels and 20 units. So look, look at that. Also, I don't know how much time I have left, but Mr. Battello, if you can remember, back in 2015, when they adopted the general plan, you stated to the news, "We don't want San Benito County to look like Santa Clara County. We want to promote growth and protect our scenic beauty." So please consider that. I'm just going to end it with that.
Thank you, sir.
Joe Turquato will be next after Judge.
Hi, Jared McDonald, Vice Chair for the San Benito County Chamber of Commerce. We serve over, are nearly 400 local businesses and supporting them. Just want to say that we support the adoption of the zoning change. I appreciate all of you guys' transparency during this process, giving additional agenda items to allow for extra public hearing, and the continued work you're going to be putting in as far as reviewing any future projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you, Supervisors. My name is Joe Turquato. I am a lifelong resident of San Benito County. I'm also in the employee of one of the property owners of the Bedabell Road node. I think the common theme is, we have this, we have it. We have a beautiful county, we have amazing resources that we want to preserve. This ordinance is so uniquely put together, it does these things that everybody wants in this county. It preserves a great vast amount of this county and the corridors. However, we also have budget problems, traffic problems. We have, we have a corridor that doesn't bring anybody into San Juan Batista or San Benito County. 50,000 cars a day pass north and southbound 101 that never get drawn into this county. This is an opportunity, the way the ordinance is drafted, for these owners of these projects to be, to be brought into the fold of helping, bring, bring business into the county to help the financial needs of the county. We heard many county employees this morning talk about the need for more revenue. It is a fact, we need the revenue, and there aren't a many, a lot of different options. This is a great way of getting it that is a very soft, non-invasive process to the county as a whole. So.
Good morning, and thank you supervisors. My name is Joe Tricuato. I am a lifelong resident of San Benito County. I'm also in the employee of one of the property owners of the Beddable Road node. I think the common theme is, we have this. We have it. We have a beautiful county. We have amazing resources that we want to preserve. This ordinance is so uniquely put together, it does these things that everybody wants in this county. It preserves a great vast amount of this county and the corridors. However, we also have budget problems, traffic problems. We have a corridor that doesn't bring anybody into San Juan Batista or San Benito County. 50,000 cars a day pass north and southbound 101 that never get drawn into this county. This is an opportunity, the way the ordinance is drafted, for these owners of these projects to be brought into the fold of helping, bring business into the county to help the financial needs of the county. We heard many county employees this morning talk about the need for more revenue. It is a fact. We need the revenue, and there aren't a lot of different options. This is a great way of getting it that is a very soft, non-invasive process to the county as a whole. So I would recommend and ask you to support the formation of this ordinance. And again, the ordinance is unique. It puts a lot of restriction on development. It gives a lot of review opportunity. All these concerns about water, traffic, all these items will be completely vetted as a process of a project coming forward. I'm the guy for our project that will have to come to you, come to the Planning Commission, and be able to justify and stand before this group and this audience. And I believe it can be done. Guess what? It won't be exactly as I envisioned it. But it will be good for the county, and it will be good for our community. With that, I think I have nothing else to say.
Thank you.
Ryder McDowell. And then it will be Jim Warren. Jim Warren. And then Ben Dingman.
Good morning, Chairman and the rest of the board. And to everybody that came today, I think I have something special to say. My name's Jim Warren, and I'm one of the owners with my son's coal tie at 101 Livestock Market. It's kind of interesting that we have been commercial for all these years. And we could have developed our property if we were the people that were just looking for the money at any time in the last 50 years. But we chose not to do that because we want it to look nice. And if we leave and drive down the road, we want to look at 101 Livestock and say, "That's something that we helped build." We don't want to look over there and have it look like something that we didn't want to have anything to do with just for the money. Because it's not about the money. The other thing is, when we came in the livestock marketing business, and by the way, we're an agricultural node, just like lots of the other nodes. And I think those people feel the same way that I do about it. And we came there 44 years ago. And at that time, there were 57 livestock markets in California. Today, there's 32.
Please address the board, sir. Just look at us.
When we came there, there was 57 livestock markets in California. Today, there's 32. There were eight livestock markets on the central coast. There were really agricultural nodes where we sold cattle and traded commerce and did lots of business with people all over the western half of the United States. Today, there's one. It's 101 Livestock Market. We are an agriculture node. We do promote agriculture to this county. We do promote agriculture all over the western half of the United States. We have the most modern livestock market in the western half of the United States. And we sell 30,000 or 40,000 cattle there every year. We appreciate your time and your effort. But we want you to know that we're not in the least bit interested in developing that property out on our own. We waited for the Planning Commission for the general plan to start with. Then we waited for how those different nodes were going to be developed so that we could be part of that system. Instead of just going off on our own and develop something that wasn't good for the county. We appreciate all your effort and thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir.
After Ben is Victoria Knight.
Hello, Ben Dingman, owner of the Rocks property. Quite a few things have been said about the Rocks property, and I do respect the Native Americans talking about the sacred rocks. But just a point of clarification, that's over a mile away from the actual node site. The Rocks Ranch incorporates over five square miles. The node site that's being proposed for your consideration for C3 zoning is less than 1.5% of that site. So when we talk about environmental impacts, we're not talking about five square miles. We're talking about 57 acres of five square miles. The other thing that I think is important to note is that in your C3 zoning, and I actually look forward to having community input. Because part of what we have to sit before you on is when a master plan is presented to this board, it'll have to go through SEQA. It'll have to address people's concern about the environment. It'll have to address the public's view of what a commercial development should be. And so I just wanted to clarify, because a lot of things have been talked about our site that frankly, we have no knowledge of. I was told that we're going to create a water park. Never been brought to us. So I just needed to clarify kind of things that have been said and things that are real. Because a master plan will have to be brought to you for your consideration, for the Planning Commission, and also for the people in this room and the rest of the people of the county. And the final thing I'd like to say is that some people have talked about the jobs that'll be created. I spend about 20 hours a week, a month, I mean, working with underserved youth. It's a problem of the state. 20% unemployment. So maybe those are service jobs. Maybe that is a fast food job. But every day, we sit there and talk to them about making the right choices. And we say, "Make the right choice." But very rarely do we have the opportunity to say, "We're going to ask you to make the right choice, but also give you an opportunity to make the right choice because you can have a job. You can do something with your life, and that's important." Thank you.
Thank you.
Victoria Knight? Sarah Jones? And then it will be Darcy?
Hi, I'm Sarah Jones, and I'm the president of Pine Brothers Gummy Throw Drops. You guys have probably seen the billboards on 101. What a lot of people don't know about me, even like my friends and family, is that I spend about 30% to 35% of my time on other entities. One of those would be Children's Cancer Funding Group, otherwise known as the Beddable Project. I really would like to clear up some things about the owner of that property. It's owned by a charitable remainder trust, meaning it's going to be donated to charities. And all the proceeds go to those charities. We were touched personally by cancer. And one in five children will die from cancer. It's very serious. And this gives us an extra opportunity to fund cancer research, provide money to families so they can give that one last trial to their child, give them one last infusion of hope. Because when only one penny out of every dollar goes to children's cancer research, you feel like the deck is just stacked against you. So it's more than just the node being commercial to us. It's what is this legacy we're going to leave? You know, something will cure cancer. What is it going to be? Is it going to be something that we fund through these projects? So anyway, I hope that everyone could take, if it does get passed, everyone takes great pride in the things that could really happen. So anyway, thank you.
Darcy? Daniel?
Is there a Daniel out there?
We found him.
Good evening, Chair and Board of Supervisors here in San Benito County. My name is Daniel Dodge Jr. and I'm from the city of Watsonville. But my comacho grandparents and mother's family had lived on the 200 block of Madera Court on the west side of Hollister for the last 60 years. My mother takes care of my grandmother and currently lives here in Hollister, so she travels every weekend to and from Watsonville. Many of us Watsonville residents, myself included, travel, work, and shop in Gilroy and the Bay Area. Whether living in Watsonville or coming back home, we are always looking to gas up, look for food, or even look for lodging. As you know, hundreds of thousands of tourists travel every year to events that are being held in the Monterey Bay. Whether in Santa Cruz, Watsonville, Salinas, Capitol, or Monterey, you need to use the Highway 101 exchange. If you look at the map, there are only two ways into the Monterey Bay. Highway 17 and the 101-129 highway. Whether on the weekdays or the weekends, Highway 101 is always backed up from Gilroy Auto Way to Prunedale. Hollister is a growing city. The San Benito County is growing at a rapid pace. Please consider rezoning this area and allow smart growth for this tri-county area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Greg Wyler. I'm here speaking on behalf of my wife and I and Mark and Susan Johnson. We own a couple hundred acres at the 129 intersection. About 10 or 15 acres at the bottom is filled from when they made 101. I just wanted to give both the audience and maybe the supervisors that haven't been here forever some thoughts. For years, we have this piece that's foul, can't be farmed. It's just sitting there in the corners. You guys drive by 129 and 101. It's just sitting there because it's all fill. And you've got gazillions of cars and trucks going by at the park in front of our property. And over the years, discussions with the Planning Commissioners and prior supervisors, boy, we should put this to use. There used to be a gas station there, I guess, 50 years ago. So we've been working with Planning Commissioners over the years. The rest of the property, we ranch. And we've heard this, and I've watched this proposal develop. And it's a shame that we've got such polarization going on in the country right now in general and even in the audience, because the audience and the members of the public are concerned about San Benito County as we are. And they don't want it to be raped, and they want it to be done well. But I want to assure everybody involved, I've been watching this for almost 20 years, especially since the 2015 general plan. This has been so well planned, for this to be the most unique commercial in the entire length and breadth of California. You will not find areas that's limited in geographic scope like this. And these themes, they're not little cartoon themes. They talk, what do we have in San Benito County? Oh, we have ranches. We have farms. We have vineyards. So they selected these themes not to somehow dupe the public, but to make it consistent with what you've already got. And you're going to have this highly regulated development plan that has to be approved so everybody can be here and say, "Well, we don't like this." The housing units were added because they want to have cheap housing for the people that work there on the jobs housing balance, not to put more tracts of homes in there. Very well thought out. I want to compliment you and the staff and all the consultants and assure the public that this is not a land grab. It's all families like us that own these few little pieces. And I urge you to adopt it.
Thank you. Okay, just to add to some of the letters I received. I received two letters that were against the project. And I received five letters that were for the project. Just wanted to let everyone know that's what I received. Okay.
Good morning, Board. Suzy again, county employee. 300,000 cars per week, plus or minus, travel through San Benito County on the 101 corridor. On behalf of SIU 521 and our county employees, I would like to say that this zoning change and the future development of the 101 nodes would put the county in a much better position to generate needed revenue that is currently lacking and would enable the county to continue to provide increasingly vital services to our community. The needs of our residents will only continue to grow, and this will help the county as a whole to be better equipped to meet these needs. Our union fully supports the adoption of the zoning change and this much-needed revenue generating opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing there are no more speaker cards, we'll bring it back to the board. Start off with Supervisor Patello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank everybody that took the time today to come out and speak. There has been a lot of dialogue in the community for a long time about this zoning compliance ordinance. And even the folks that, I really want to thank the folks that are in opposition to this change. In the way that they have expressed themselves, we've been able to incorporate some of the ideas and concerns and protections into the zoning ordinance. And it made it a better ordinance. I also want to thank the property owners on the four nodes. Believe it or not, they are very good neighbors. And their intentions are solid. And like it was said just a few minutes ago, this is a very unique zoning compliance ordinance. There's nothing like it in the state. It's very constraining. When we've talked about this in the general plan process, I honestly did not think anybody would take this up. And talking about the general plan, it's been a long process. It was adopted in 2015. We worked on it for five or six years before that. So in moving towards this new zone change, it's taken my entire career as a county supervisor. And I think some of the property owners stated that the change has been 20 years or better. The goal that I've always had as a supervisor has been to protect our rural agricultural historical community. And this ordinance does exactly that. The four nodes, we'll start with Beddable. People, in case people have forgotten, and it seems that they have appeared to have forgotten, is that the area that we're talking about developing is an area that was already zoned for other uses other than agriculture. It was a commercial use. It was a junkyard with a chop shop on it and an illegal cannabis grove in the river dumping toxics and pollution into the Pajaro. That's all cleaned up. This owner wants to do something special there and preserve the balance of the property and the balance of the environment for all of us to enjoy. I'm 100% for him. At 129 and 101, as I made sure we talked about a little bit, it had a commercial zoning. It's a little pocket that we could take advantage of for some revenue, jobs, and business. And I think anywhere else in the state would have already had done it 30 years ago. 101 Ranch, it's already zoned commercial. This is just opening up other opportunities in the future. Business does change. My business changed. Everything has changed. If we don't plan for it, we're a fail. And Rocks Road, you have Monterey County right there, right on the border. There's a major event center there already, along with a gas station. Monterey County's making plenty of money. What about us? We heard from our county employees this morning. And it is a real, real problem for this county. If we do not figure out ways to move forward, we're not sustainable right now. We're just flat, not sustainable. And, you know, this board has worked hard for years to try to figure out how to provide better service and fair equity to our county employees. And each of these nodes helps with that incrementally. And so I want to express my gratitude to our staff, our consultants. I think the last few months, I've ridden some of them pretty hard to get to this point. And I appreciate their efforts. And I'm looking forward to being able to move forward with a well-planned project at some date. I don't think all these four nodes are developed at one time. Maybe one might come forward sooner than the other three. It may be years before people take advantage of the zoning opportunities. But we have to keep going forward. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I've actually sat down with Supervisor Gilio with the Preserve Our Rural Communities folks. And, you know, speaking on my behalf, I've really thought out that ultimately the arguments that reflect their focus, which is basically preserving that community or preserving. And after really, especially with really considering the, all the logistics, and obviously I haven't been around as long through the initial process, the general plan review in two thousand fifteen. But I have been engaged enough to kind of understand the details and the extensive amount of work that has been done to make sure that there is a focus on preservation. It's pretty clear within the context of all the documents that we have. And ultimately, thinking about the solvency, which is another element. I mean, I want to preserve our community within an ability to be solvent. Those things have to be consistent with each other. If you prioritize one over the other, there's problems on both ends of the spectrum. So, it's really hard to mitigate that. And ultimately, when I sat down through budget processes and thinking about the needs of our community, how much our staff is pushed to the limits, how much are incapable of basically being able to be efficient, as I would see it. You know, I live in the private world where I understand that there's got to be a level of efficiency that automatically creates a sense of quality and service that you're going to expect ultimately to support the needs of your customer. And our focus would be the constituency or the community. So, it is a tough decision, but it doesn't change the reality that, you know, as much as we would want to put off a plan, that by default would mean we're putting off any real opportunity for an income revenue or a strong revenue stream that we need. You know, we're in the middle of negotiations. There's a lot of things that have to be ironed out and our focus is basically, or I should speak on my behalf, my focus is making sure those two are very consistent with each other. So, with that said, I would hand over the floor, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Gilio.
I've taken quite a bit of time on this to ensure that I'm well informed when we make our decision on the twenty-fourth. And I wanted to say thank you to everybody here on both sides of the issue that are here to comment. I think that both sides of the issue would say that I have taken the time to listen. And here's what I, some of the things I heard today to reiterate it back that I took notes on for if this is approved for the future, things that we should consider. The projects are changing. There's now residential. I looked in land use section five-point-eight from the two thousand fifteen general plan. It talks about live-work development. I won't read the section, but it's in there. But I think we need to pay attention to that for the future. Scenic corridor, what are the dimensions? You mentioned that. I think that's important. That's something I'm going to study personally myself. How far does that extend out? Is it only, you've made a really good point. So, I'm going to study that. You talked about limiting the amount of hotels and units. I think some of that's been done with the amount of square footage, but I will also pay close attention to that. The cultural heritage to what's happening is important. I'll pay attention to that. And then, sequo, I think that's going to be, well, I don't think it is going to be a very detailed, anything that happens, any project that's proposed under these master plans is going to be coming to the planning commission and to this board. And that's a actually more restrictive process than we've ever had in the past in any other zoning, in my opinion. Some of the things that I see in here that I think are important to point out, I think we kind of got distracted with a question a little bit, but the county tourism marketing plan is required for each node. I don't think we actually physically said that. We may have, but we saw it on the board. Regional signs to promote commerce and tourism. I also met with council members in the city of San Juan Batista. And their concern is, rightly so, is for their community that they're concerned about what this may or may not do to their community. And I think that's really important to mention that I think anything that we do, if these nodes are adopted and the zoning is changed in the future, projects should support the city of San Juan Batista. I'll say it for the record, I said it to them. And I mean that. And I mean it for the Pinnacles. I mean it for Clear Creek. I mean it for the city of Hollister, Tres Pinos, all these areas. I think if these things happen, we should make sure as we're reviewing these projects, and I'm looking at my planning commissioner now, if these things come forward, that there is some reflection to all these other areas in our county to draw people in off of the fringes in our county to enjoy San Benito County and educate people on San Benito County. And the, I really, really encourage folks that are sitting here today or watching on the video that have not taken the time to read our general plan from two thousand fifteen. Again, I was not here. I read the general plan especially. Pay attention to land use section five on this. It starts on page about sixty. Really important to read through that. And it talks about all of the restrictions and all of the potential projects that may even be allowed to go in there. And it's very thoughtful and I'm pleasantly surprised, actually, when I went to go study this section, how detailed it was. It's very, very detailed about what is to be expected out there. And that's a credit to county staff, supervisors, and folks from the past that developed this general plan. And also, if you look at the very beginning of the general plan, I didn't count the names of the people that are, that were involved. And these, obviously, I'm sure there's more people involved. But I would say if you look at the list there, there's a lot of folks that were involved in this general plan, a lot of organizations, a lot of entities. And I think that they did a good job in the outreach back then at that time. And I think that's one of the concerns that this group has. And one final thought, Mr. Chair, when Supervisor Hernandez and I did meet with the folks from Preserve Our Rural Communities, number one, I want to say thank you for your time. And number two, I think you'll remember, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'll say what I remember, is we committed to, one of the concerns you had was only having one hearing and you felt that this was going to be rushed through and voted on at one hearing, one time. And we brought our chairman of the county. We brought our county attorney, myself, Peter Hernandez, and our director of RMA. And I assured you that day that I would support at least having two meetings on this. And I think we've held true to that commitment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Dela Cruz.
Yes, thank you. I also like to thank the Preserve Our Community. I met with them in San Juan. I was educated from their perspective and understood and understand where they're coming from. I also like to thank the staff and all the other members, the public, and the applicants for pushing for this idea that we are here today. And I too share your concern that we need to make sure there'll be more meetings. And I think we're doing that because there'll be more opportunities for the public and you to express your opposition or your concerns or if you have other ideas how we can make this process a lot better. I'm always about fairness. That's always the number one thing. And seeing that there's members of the public here and there's been several other planning commission meetings and there's going to be more meetings, I think you will have a lot more opportunity to talk about how you feel about this project. And I want to thank our chairman for doing a good job for handling it in a professional way in which we heard all your views. We understand, unfortunately, not, when we make decisions, not everyone's going to be happy, but we need to make decisions. And that's why the people elected us to do that. And again, I just want to thank you for participating in the process and some of the issues that were your concerns were addressed. It may not be what you want more, but at least we're listening to you. We understand. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll finish it off here. Just, you know, I want to specifically thank the Preserve Our Rural Communities, Mary Edge and Leslie Jordan. I sat down with each of these groups and people and listened to what they had to say. And I, in return, gave them my view. You know, I look back and I spend a lot of time looking at what's become of this and where we're at. So, I just, once again, we're back here on the twenty-fourth. Just want to thank everybody for their participation. And we'll move forward from here with the wish of the board.
I'll move to continue the item to September twenty-fourth.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, five zero. We will now move to close session.
There was no reportable action except that I was authorized to sign a conflict waiver, item number 38, and to approve a tolling agreement in item 41.
Okay, we'll start off with our regular agenda. Anthony will be here momentarily, and Supervisor Dela Cruz excused himself. He had to run an errand. He'll be back real quick. Start off with the Health Human Services Agency.
Yes.
I was going to say good morning, but now it's afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair.
I apologize for such a long wait before you.
That's okay. It was very interesting this morning. So, good afternoon, board members and Chair. Public Health is here today to give you an update on the efforts that have been happening in the last year to mitigate the opioid epidemic and crisis within our own jurisdiction. As you know, a few years ago, Dr. Newell was here, and she spoke to you about starting the opioid task force, along with Dr. White. Dr. Newell has moved on to Santa Cruz County, she's their health officer now, and we're currently recruiting for a health officer. But today, Mary, Dr. Mary White has stayed with the project, along with Veronica Johnson, who was formerly an AmeriCorps Vista volunteer, she's now a county employee, she's a health educator. And we have a new Vista volunteer, AmeriCorps Vista volunteer, and that's Marissa Gutierrez. And they're here today to give you a presentation on the past year with the opioid task force and public health.
So, good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors, thanks so much for this opportunity to talk with you a little bit today, just to give you a brief update on the opioid situation here in our county, as well as the work of the task force over the last year and two, since we were last here to talk with you. So, as September marks the two-year anniversary for the opioid task force, we want to begin by thanking you for your ongoing support and dedication to addressing this important issue, not only for our community, but all communities across the country, as we so well knew, know from the news every day that we see. The task force here locally has been working diligently, and has especially made significant strides, we feel, over the last year, that will help further accelerate ongoing efforts to combat the local opioid issue, through what we hope to be increased services, prevention efforts, and even selection for grant funding. So, just as a little kind of overview history, so in 2017, we were made aware of some concerning information around opioid use and misuse in our county. So, the most concerning was data from the California Department of Public Health, which showed us to have the twelfth-highest opioid-related overdose death rate in the state. During that same period of time, we also learned that our rate of opioid prescriptions was high, relative to the state average and our neighboring counties. We had law enforcement and pharmacy work group at the time informing us that there had been four pharmacy robberies in a two-month period, each time the culprit was seeking opioids specifically. And then also, during that period of time, we had the local emergency department expressing concern over the increase in opioid-seeking patients presenting to the emergency department. So, with all of this, we knew that we needed to address the problem immediately, and that's when, as Lynn mentioned, our health officer at the time, Dr. Newell, came to the board to present this data and situation, and ask for support to put together an opioid task force. So, we can, quickly convened a group at the time, and put together some initial strategies based over our priority concerns, and have been working diligently ever since. So, to, since our start in two thousand and seventeen, here's just a little bit about what's been accomplished, what's been happening. So, the opioid task force is a cross-collaborative group, we have grown to over fifty members, representing many different agencies and organizations throughout our county. So, we have people from public health, from behavioral health, emergency medical services, the hospital, pharmacists, probation, law enforcement, homeless shelter, food bank, the schools, and the list goes on from there, really good representation. The task force remains committed to being an action-oriented group, relying on the strength and partnerships across agencies and community to get the work done. The first strategy that we implemented, and remains ongoing because it is such a critical one, is naloxone training and distribution. So, naloxone is the medication that is used to reverse overdose due to opioids, it's also referred to as a opioid antagonist, it's available as a nasal spray, and is very easy and safe to administer. The Surgeon General and the Centers for Disease Control have really been pushing to make it available in your communities. So, local emergency medical services and public health collaborated on obtaining a grant from the California Department of Health, and we've been training and dispersing naloxone throughout our community ever since. So, to date, we've trained over a hundred and seventy-five people, representing well over twenty agencies, with more than a hundred and twenty-five doses dispersed into the community. When we started, we started the training first with our first responders, law enforcement, the pharmacists, the schools, and have gone on since then to include places like the homeless shelter, the food bank, and a long list of others. So, training and dispersing of naloxone into the community is an important harm reduction strategy, and remains so. In fact, case in point, recently, in the last year, a very own local law enforcement and fire successfully used the naloxone that they now all carry, because of all of this training, to reverse several opioid overdoses in the field. Another strategy that has been used is to address safe prescribing and dispensing of prescription opioid medications. Historically, for many people who suffer from opioid addiction, it started with the use of prescription opioids, perhaps prescribed after a surgery or injury, and then with continued use. We know that opioids are highly addictive, and studies now show that the likelihood of addiction to opioids starts to sharply increase after only three to five days of use. We've been working with our local providers and pharmacies on reinforcing the newer national and state prescribing and dispensing guidelines and recommendations. We held a prescriber-pharmacist opioid summit last November, specifically to discuss the issue, to learn and share best practices among our providers. So, we're pleased to report that there's been over a twenty percent decrease in the rate of opioid prescriptions in county over the last two years. Education and outreach remains a key ongoing strategy for us. So, we've provided and continue to provide numerous presentations and outreaches throughout our community, to educate and heighten awareness about opioid misuse. We've presented to a variety of groups, including the schools, at various community events, health fairs, a very long list, and those are ongoing now. These have been very, very impactful. Most recently in May, we presented to over fourteen hundred students at the high school over the course of two days. Equally important also is safe disposal of unused and expired medications, also a critical strategy to this issue. We've been working to expand safe disposal options for all medications, but especially targeting the opioids and other controlled medications. We know that leftover, unused, or expired medications at home can be accessed and used inappropriately. We've heard numerous times about youth accessing leftover prescription opioids from their home, or a friend's home, or a grandparent's medicine cabinet, and then bringing the medications to parties where they are then misused. The message that we're pushing out is that leftover medication should not be kept around, they should not be kept at home, and they should be disposed of appropriately and in a timely manner. So, we partnered with local integrated waste management and the pharmacies to expand some safe disposal options. So, for example, we're looking at placing a couple of additional medication disposal bins in one or two of the pharmacies, so that's a work in progress. And we're also making available medication takeaway envelopes, which can be filled with medications, and then dropped in the mail, because they're prepaid and pre-addressed, and they go to the proper DEA disposal sites. These are available from the pharmacies, and public health has limited supply as well. Hollister Police Department, a very important member of our opioid task force, has been holding biannual drug take-back days as well. The next one actually will be held on October twenty-sixth, in the Target parking lot. Almost one thousand pounds of medications have been collected through the take-back days over the last two years.
What time is that, October twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth, I don't have the time. Ten to two, ten to two.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And anyone is welcome, just drive up and, you know, hand, hand your medications in a bag, and they just put them in a bin.
Can't afford medications.
The opioid task force developed and implemented a website last year. The website is rich in information and resources for our community and providers alike. It is very user-friendly, and we encourage you to take a look. The development and implementation of the website is credited to the work of our first Vista AmeriCorps volunteer, Veronica, who was assigned to our county last year, dedicated to the work of the opioid task force. The website can be found at www.sbcopieta taskforce.org. The opioid task force also applied and was accepted to the California Opioid Safety Network about a year and a half ago. This has provided us technical and resource support, as well as much-needed training. But most importantly, it provided us help in the way of AmeriCorps Vista volunteers, who are specifically assigned to our county's opioid task force. This has been an invaluable resource for us, and we thank both Veronica and Marissa for their service. So, all of these activities and work over the last two years have led us to some recent tipping point achievements. We are one of four coalitions in the state recently awarded the Addiction Treatment Starts Here Community Partnership Grant. This was funded through the California Department of Healthcare Services. The grant will fund a sixteen-month learning collaborative, providing us technical, tailored technical assistance, and some personnel funding to support continuation of the work. As we are otherwise unfunded, this grant was really critical for us. The grant is allowing us to transition our previous AmeriCorps Vista into a health educator position focused on opioid task force work, and will allow us to keep the work progress going. In addition, the opioid task force was awarded a couple of small grants from the Health Trust of Silicon Valley, and these were for some specific projects for medication safety, storage, and disposal. In addition, the local hospital emergency department, a member of the opioid task force as well, was awarded an emergency department bridge program grant, which will help increase access and delivery of medication-assisted treatment and link-to-service directly out of the emergency department for patients who initially present to the emergency department with opioid use disorder. So, that was a really significant occurrence, before I go to that. And then lastly, local behavioral health services recently began implementation of the Drug Medi-Cal Organized Delivery Waiver Program, which will help to expand access to high-quality care for Medi-Cal enrollees with substance use disorder or opioid use disorder. So, each of these recent achievements has helped us reach this sort of tipping point, as we're calling it, where we can truly begin to impact implementation and expansion of local treatment and support services, something that is much needed here locally, within our own community. So, as we mark our two years of work, we've recently received data that shows our rate of opioid-related overdose deaths has dropped. The slide on the left is the two thousand and seventeen data that we showed at the beginning of the presentation, and to the right is the most recent data we, we just received. Note, though, that the two thousand and eighteen numbers are still considered preliminary by the state, but we are hopeful that they will hold true, and we will continue to see a drop in deaths due to opioid overdose.
You know, let's just look at you four right here, since you're representing, and say thank, you know, I want to say thank you. I mean, that's a big drop.
Yes.
And, you know, I know, four of you had a lot to do with it, along with your teammates, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for recognizing. So, we've come a long way in the last two years, with many strategies that we know are positively impacting opioid use and misuse in our community, but we are also acutely aware that this is an ongoing complicated issue, with much work still to be done. And a few members of the opioid task force had the honor of meeting with Congressman Panetta a couple of weeks ago, to update him on the opioid issue and work of the task force here in county. As we updated the congressman on our latest data and status and what's been happening, we let him know, though, that we still face some big challenges with the issue, and asked for his support. We also let him know that the progress that's been made, and the continued work, is much due to the strengths of our partnerships and ability to collaborate across agencies and organizations, and that was something that he definitely recognized. So, with that, we thank you again for your continued support and for your time today. And I have one final comment, it's unrelated to opioids actually, but it's still a public health message nonetheless, and that is that flu season is fast approaching, so we encourage everyone to get their flu shots, and we remind everyone also that our annual county-wide flu clinic is coming up on October twenty-ninth, and it will be from three to eight P.M. at Vets Hall. So, thanks so much.
We'll see you there.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further is needed?
Is there any public comment?
Any public comment? Bring it back to the board, number thirty, retitle for record, waive formal reading, and continue to September twenty-fourth for adoption, county's ordinance related to purchasing, making minor modifications relating to service contracts.
This is an ordinance, I'll read the title for the record. It's an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County San Benito amending by chapter five point oh nine, purchasing of Title V finance of the San Benito County Code relating to service contracts. So, there was supposed to be a redlined version, for some reason it didn't display correctly, but the only change that's being made here is, originally in the code, it said professional service contracts, we're taking out the word professional, I'll make sure that there's a redlined version in next week's agenda, and that's because there's been some question about whether or not we can do contracts for non-professional services, and also have that delegated to the, the C.A.O. or the assistant purchasing agents, which are the department heads. It does not change when a contract can be let, so if it has to be, you know, if we have other prohibitions about letting the services, the contracts, then we have to stick with existing law, this just allows, who has the authority to sign those contracts?
And up the top of my head, that's fifty and a hun, or fifty and ten, right?
Yes.
Any public comment? Bring it back to the board, any questions from the board?
Move to waive the reading and title for the record, already done by staff, and make a motion to accept the introduction, waive for the reading, and continue to September twenty-fourth.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero. County Council, retitle of the ordinance for the record, waive for the reading, to accept introduction of ordinance amending section twenty-one point zero one point zero nine two, to allow movement of a building from one site to another, if it does not meet minimum code requirements at time of initial inspection, and continue to the September twenty-fourth for adoption.
This title is indicated in ordinance of the Board of Supervisors, the County San Benito amending section twenty-one point oh one point zero nine two, initial inspections of Article Six, relocation of structures of chapter twenty-one point oh one, building regulations of Title Twenty-One of the San Benito County Code. And the, it's the last portion of this section that's being changed, so our current code does not allow the structure to be relocated if it has building code violations. And it says now, it would say, if the structure does not meet minimum code requirements as determined by the initial inspection, the structure shall not be approved for relocation or reuse, except if a bond, letter, or credit, or the guarantee acceptable to the RMA director is, is provided to county, to the county sufficient, sufficient to perform all work necessary to remedy all code violations, and a written agreement is entered into with the property owner where the building will be located, guaranteeing all work will be performed within twelve months. And that would allow historical buildings and other buildings with code violations to be relocated.
The only question I had was, can we make sure that it cannot be lived in, there's no habitation?
That would be, unless we altered this, that would be taken care of under our existing code provisions right now, minor code violations, sometimes people can still locate, live in them, but if it's a significant life and safety issues, it would be red-tagged.
I had a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, Barbara, where's the, where, you said, so within twelve months, how do you verify or validate that that, those code violations were addressed and, and, you know, acceptable?
You'd have to have some sort of, you, you could do a couple of different things, and I would defer to RMA probably, but you could have either a list of things that need to be, you wouldn't give a final permit approval, probably, no certificate of occupancy until they, well, depends, but possibly no certificate of occupancy, I'll defer.
I think our RMA director can answer that question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Harry Malbragennis, RMA Director. We have enough control, I think, within the codes, as well as having the bond, to make sure that things are done. But I think this will help us, as we get more and more into interest in preserving historic buildings, that at least we give that opportunity to happen, otherwise, some of these buildings will have to be demolished. So, I think it's important to add this to the code, and I think there's adequate protections the way that it's been set up by the attorneys.
So, that answers my question, I'm, I'm okay.
What's the wish of the, or any public comment? What's the wish of the board?
Well, I move, go ahead.
Thirty-one, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I, I move that we adopt the staff recommendation and read the title of the ordinance for the record, can we waive the reading, staff, or do we have to read it?
You can just say, "Per staff recommendation."
Per staff recommendation. Per staff recommendation and make a motion, I move that we waive for the reading, accept introduction and continue to September twenty fourth for twenty nineteen for final adoption.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five to zero? Abstain?
I was not here.
He was not here, he abstained. Thirty-two. The adopt a resolution expressing opposition and non-support of the state highway operations and protection program, project to construct a roundabout at the intersection of S R. one fifty-six and S R. twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is essentially mirroring a resolution that the city of Hollister adopted last week, wherein they also are very opposed to the roundabout occurring at that intersection. We have, this issue will be coming up for the cog at the next meeting as well. There are a number of safety issues that I'm very much concerned about. And I've, I've looked at another roundabout similar to this that was done in San Joaquin County, where the accident count was a hundred and twelve accidents over a four-year period and where the county actually had to come back and reduce it to one lane. The engineer's advice from San Joaquin to me was, do not put these in a very high-volume, high-speed intersection as one of your first projects unless and until your community is used to using these roundabouts. So it's a concern, I'm also concerned that we do not lose the shop money that is provided by the state. There are other intersections that I think would be good recipients of that, including the San Felipe one fifty-six intersection just further north where we're seeing a lot more traffic volumes. So we very much would like to, and we state so in the resolution, be able to preserve the shop funds. I'm available for any questions.
The public comment? He's here. There's Kevin.
Yes?
No, sir.
So Kevin Stopper from Hollister, I just wanted to express my, I talked at the Hollister City Council as well, the official opposition to the roundabout by the county, because I also spoke about the city. I'm concerned about writing a letter opposing a safety measure, and that's what my concern is. And I know that our R M A director is looking at safety issues as well, and I appreciate that. I spoke at the council meeting and my, my, my problems were, some of the comparisons at the Tracy roundabout there, the, the traffic is not the same. And the, the accidents there were more minor type accidents and no fatalities. And I think the, the goal with the one twenty-five, or twenty-five, one fifty-six intersection is to reduce fatalities. And that's, that's more important than fenders, fender benders. And while I don't think a roundabout is really a good answer, I think the Measure G funds and matching funds from the state, we should attack the overpass situation and try and get that done first and meet up with the twenty-five project would be a better idea. We've already talked to Caltrans about that and they kind of have deaf ears on that. I don't know if that's, you know, the answer. But, you know, when we went to the Vet's Hall, they kind of fell on deaf ears at that meeting. There was not a lot of feedback that they took from the public. I speak because my wife and daughter were T-boned at San Felipe and twenty-five one night. And I was in my pajamas running down there to get them out of a car. And had the car not hit a foot before the rear wheel, my daughter would probably be in a wheelchair or dead. So I think roundabouts or some kind of safety measure needs to be done at these intersections. And I don't like the fact that we're gonna shift the money nowhere, but it sounds like Harry has got ideas, which I like. I haven't heard those ideas before. So I just wanted to put in my input, I'm worried about officially opposing a safety measure, but it doesn't sound like we're saying no to safety. So I'm kind of clarifying that now, and I guess I'm out of time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Another speaker card? Okay, bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, we've had this discussion a number of times at cog and we've had public hearings. I know I'm very concerned about the fact that this is the best safety measure we, Caltrans can come up with on an intersection that we're going to probably have to tear out completely in a few short years. There has been ten million dollars and then we're tearing it out and we're have to build a roundabout correctly. In my understanding, after the last cog meeting, is that they were going to use relatively the same footprint of that intersection to make the roundabout. And I'm sorry, I'm not an engineer, but I could see that that will not work. And that we're have, I truly believe more accidents, possibly fatalities anyway. And I'm very supportive of this resolution. And, but we still should work with Caltrans to improve the safety of that intersection. Some ideas that came out of the cog board and Supervisor Gilio will help me in a minute, I'm sure, is some rumble steps, strips, possible bigger flashing lights, a warning about the incoming intersection and improvements of maybe some of that for the time being until we do the twenty-five widening. And it seems like it's senseless to waste, you know, taxpayers' money and tear it out in a, in a short period of time. The, the other thing about it too is, you know, I, I like roundabouts. I, I think it would, it might work personally, but it has to be designed in a colossal size for manage that amount of traffic. And we don't have it in either direction. And from the design that I've seen, that was submitted to us in the meeting, it's a be a disaster. And I, I hope we adopt this resolution, send it to Caltrans, send it to the C T C. I think our state senator needs to have it, our assemblyman has to have it, as well as the governor's office. We send it to the world and try to keep this fight up and not waste taxpayers' money.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'll keep my comments brief, I've commented on this a bunch of times at a lot of different locations, including all the way back at the city council chambers. So one of the things that's interesting about this intersection is you have, without having the exact numbers in front of me, you have a vast majority of commercial highway traffic, truck traffic going in one direction and the vast majority of the north-south traffic, or if you want to call it east-west, depending on how you look at it out there, going from Gilroy to Hollister is going to be vehicle traffic. The whole idea with interchanges is to keep big trucks and little cars from colliding with each other and we're introducing this. And one of the things that's been frustrating at the cog level, and I'm looking over there at Peter, because that's where the mayor sits at cog, and he's been talking about rumble strips for two years now, since we've been on cog. And we hear from Caltrans is, well, the federal highway safety regulations say that we can't put rumble strips on there. So I'm headed over to Monterey the other day, a couple of weeks back. And if you drive through the intersection of Mont Castro Valley Road, I think it is, but North Monterey County High School's back there and the one fifty-six, guess what you drive over? Rumble strips, big huge red lights, warnings, which we just did, the big huge red lights and the warnings. So to hear that from Caltrans over and over, that's something we can't do, then I actually see it on another state highway somewhere else. It's very disconcerting to me. I'm probably one of the folks that, in our community, that likes to try to work with everybody and, and not put up a roadblock and say, hey, don't do this, I'd really like to try to kumbaya and work together with everybody. But I tell you, we need to, in my humble opinion, we need to adopt this resolution today. And, and one of the things that Mr. Stopper said, that it hit me, and I was actually watching the city council meeting, and I was all set and I was raring to go for this, and when you told me that you don't want to vote no to a safety project, that, that, it's true. You don't ever want to vote no to a safety project and that causes, does cause me some pause. But we do have some ideas in here and specifically it says that shop funds intended for this project be reallocated to another eligible project, so hopefully we're not just giving that away. And I, I don't think we're voting no here to safety after I've contemplated it over the last couple of weeks. But I think we're sending a message to Caltrans as you're not listening to our community, this is a temporary project and let's accelerate. Now that, because all this was, was contemplated when we didn't have Measure G funds. Now we have Measure G funds, now we have money to bring to the table, let's get this overpassed on, gosh darn it, and let's get it done as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hi me?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to piggyback on Supervisor Gilio mentioned, I had sat down with, with our R M A director and I, I believe him to be, you know, obviously aware enough and have enough insight and understanding as to how these things happen, being with the experience that he has, I really do trust his judgment. And he's explained to me the reality of, you know, the, the, the other roundabout that, that he compared it to and it's a whole different set of traffic than, than our, our community, I'm, we're in the middle of the, of the salad bowl. So we get a lot of truck traffic and I do agree, we, we need to make sure that we're focused on supporting things that are going to protect our, our community. That's going to have to take some communication. And I think the, the reality is, is being at that meeting that we went to where Caltrans pretty much made it a one-sided conversation and didn't direct any kind of dialogue, instead of anything, taking it offline, that was really the only direction they gave to the public. It doesn't encourage a sense of intent to listen to the, the community it's intending to serve. So with that said, I definitely support this resolution, Mr. Chair.
You said no.
I don't want to belabor this, but.
Yes, sir, Mr. Del Cruz.
You know, the, the other business that I work for is, you know, we do a lot of delivery and we have fifty-three footers and I tell you, it's going to hurt our business. We're going to have to go all the way around and go through downtown, which is a no-no. It's, it's a bad idea. I understand the members of the public, it's a safety concern, but Caltrans should come to the table and say, how can we work together? Instead of just throwing this in our laps. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Bring it back to the board, what's the wish of the board?
I move we approve the resolution as written by staff, it doesn't have a number quite yet, to oppose the roundabout at one fifty-six and twenty-five.
Second, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero? Let's get that letter and send it.
And Mr. Chair, if I could suggest, if we could make sure that those, that resolutions goes out to everyone, C T C. I, I think it would be, it's time to make a statement.
Yeah.
Thank you, and just for the record, I'm not opposed to safety either. The, the real safety solution there is to separate the traffic with an overcrossing.
Yeah.
And we've told that to Caltrans. Tim Gerton, who is the director of District Five, will be at the cog meeting this coming week. So we'll have an opportunity to address him directly as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Resource Management. Adopt the resolution of the Board of Supervisors to ratify the county administrators' letting of contracts to remediate local emergencies.
And, and this is a customary, I'll defer to you, but I just noticed that there was need for two changes in the resolution. One would be in paragraph four, it talks about, it would be at the end of the sentence, it would say after completion of the emergency roadwork and the date on paragraph five should be December twenty-fourth, perhaps two thousand nineteen, if that's acceptable with the R M A director.
That's fine.
Again, this is a resolution basically to allow us to complete two major pothole improvement projects, Panos, as well as the work that Granite is doing around the county. Because of the way the process was handled in terms of putting this out, we are required to, to provide the language for an emergency so that the work can be continued. So we would ask your support of this because we want to get the work done before the rainy season starts.
And just for a point here is, four fifths of a vote is required?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chair?
Any public comment? Seeing there is no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board, Supervisor Dela Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I noticed that we approved some, some work to be done already in the, in the prior motions today.
That was separate.
Correct, it's separate, correct, and that's according, that's the first list of hopefully more items to come.
Well, that, the list this morning was from S B. one funds.
Correct.
And hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll be bringing you projects to be done through the Measure G funds as well.
My next question to you was going to be, I haven't heard anything from, what's happening on Buena Vista Road. I know we are slated to meet with the city and have a little town hall meeting about Buena Vista Road, but there's nothing that you're pushing forward for.
At Buena Vista, we are through the Measure G funds. That's one of the projects. We, we drove that section of Buena Vista, I drove it with you. And it needs some work, but beyond that work, I think we all agree that it needs some traffic calming. And the city has already started a, it's called the Smart Streets Program, I think, traffic calming on a number of streets, including Buena Vista. And I want to make sure that we extend it to the county. So we're trying to set up a meeting with the city staff to utilize our funds as well as their funds.
And I got an email and I'm going to respond to my availability time. Just want to share with you that the timeline that, that the city Hollister's moving on Buena Vista Road is going to take almost like eighteen months to two years. We're going to have North Street Extension, it's going to be open up sooner than that. And so we need to kind of force the city to come to the table sooner rather than later and start doing things now because with all that traffic's going to start moving left and right and all the new development, it's going to cost a lot of, lot of traffic issues for the community in that side of Hollister.
That's very much a concern of mine also, and I've already had one meeting with planning and public work staff separate from that committee, and they're anxious to get started on this as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions from the board members?
Yeah, you know, I, I think Buena Vista is a classic example of maybe we should be working a little bit closer to the city of Hollister on their impacts of some of the developments there. And the developers should be kind of picking up the costs of some of that road repair. And, you know, that, those are the type of things that, in the ideal world, if we had a good intergovernmental committee meeting, which you could have some dialogue, it's no skin off of Hollister and it shouldn't be any skin off of us, but to ask for our diversion of our road funds into an area that really should be repaved because of the additional growth, I, I have some issues with. But because of all the other roads in the county that need to be, you know, addressed, but I'm very supportive of this right now, it's perfect weather, fix, fix the roads as best we can and, and go, go at it.
What is the wish of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt this with the changes recommended by staff, our attorney, Ms. Thompson.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero? This takes us to number thirty-four. Adopt a resolution authorizing the display of the national motto, in God we trust, and delegate authority to accept donations. I'll let Supervisor Hernandez lead off, being that he asked for this to be on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, did I, oh, I, I'll be.
Are you, are you referring to the national motto? Yeah, yeah, we're going to hear the item and then, and then after the chair will.
I thought you were talking about the last one, I was like, I did ask. Okay, sorry, sir. Go ahead, Supervisor Hernandez.
Thank you, Chairman Dino. So I, I, you know, with much consideration, I know the last meeting I mentioned bringing this item forward, mentioning supporting the national motto, the sentiment was, was actually a reflection of, of kind of the sentiment that you've shared on the board, Chairman Dino, which is basically of unity, of dialogue, of diversity as far as thought, but ultimately consideration for the reality that something unites us. And this has been a precedent already established since nineteen fifty-six, it's congressionally approved, it's on our money. You know, ultimately this, there's a, I mean, today's actually a very historic day.
You know, ultimately, this, there's a, I mean, today is actually a very historic day in the sense that it's on the heels of September 11th, that tragic day, and where this model became at the forefront of support, unity, to, to ultimately unify a country. And I think especially even in consideration of division that's happened in our country, within, when you have diversity, there is certain things that create a, a level of unity and consistency. And I say consistency because it, it relates to what, what I just mentioned. Our money already has it, it's already congressionally approved, it's part of who we are, it's part of our heritage. And I, I, I think that's something that we should be proud of, and, and in that extent, even talking to the public. I know I've, I've talked to many military folks, the VFW themselves, and, and the folks that I have talked to have been very supportive. They couldn't make it today because they, they were actually attending a funeral, as they always do, supporting our community and our, our folks that have served. This to me is a, it's not just, it's, it becomes a thing that I think encourages us as a board to really consider being unified and, and ultimately move forward remembering our, our fallen.
Thank, thank you. I'm going to ask for public comment first, so I won't, so I don't forget.
My apology for interrupting you earlier.
No worries.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board, Chairman Medina and the other members of the board about this. I just had some thoughts about it that I'd like to convey here. I was thankful to, pleased to see that this item was on the agenda, because I think it's important to a democratic society. And I think that mottos are more than just mere words. Mottos are powerful words, they're reminders of, that result in thoughtful actions being taken by people. The words contained in the Pledge of Allegiance that was done here earlier today remind us of responsibilities and commitments that we have to ourselves and to our nations. And similar to the Pledge of Allegiance is this motto, "In God We Trust". It all reminds us of who we are, and it helps us to be honorable in our dealings with our fellow man and our commitment to duty and to our families. So words can empower us to make commitments and to put our trust in higher powers than ourselves. Some people object to some things, maybe this particular motto, I don't know. I've never had given anybody a $20 bill that had this motto on it that refused it yet. So that's a thought. But the motto, "In God We Trust", is not a commitment to any religious faith, whether, faith, whether it's Buddhist or Hindu or Christian, but it's an acknowledgement to a creative influence greater than ourselves. The motto is a short declaration similar to what we see in the longer declaration by our founding fathers, who said this as they signed the Declaration of Independence. They said, "With the firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our life, our fortune, and our sacred honor." And I think that motto is reminding us of this early part of our history in this country. In view of the fact that, as Supervisor Hernandez has mentioned, that we are just one day off from 9/11 disaster, I think that it would be appropriate for this board to pass the resolution today. The motto permanently and prominently displayed in this building here would be a powerful, continuous visual reminder of our commitment to ourselves, and is a great reminder to our individual responsibilities to our government, both locally and throughout the nation. So thank you for your opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair and other supervisors, thank you for having me. My name is Matt Kirkland. I am the campus pastor at South Valley Community Church here in Hollister. And I've spoken to many pastors here in town and asked several to join me today, many of which had other responsibilities. But I wanted to come in support of this. I think it's a great idea to publicly display our motto in this place, and I would love to be able to be one of the supporters of such a motto. So thank you for the consideration. I hope you consider voting yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any further? Supervisor Batel?
Yes, I, you know, first I want to say that, you know, I believe in God. I take it very seriously, and, and it's very personal. I certainly have a tremendous amount of respect for Supervisor Hernandez and for his faith. I know he's a man of deep faith, and, and it's real powerful for him. Yeah, I'm, I studied this issue really hard, probably a little bit harder than the commercial notes coming into this meeting, to be honest with you. And because I, I think it's, it really is important. I, I understand, and we chit-chatted a little bit during one of our breaks about the patriotism. And, and if there is, in the history of the motto, you know, coming from, you know, the Civil War times, and that's when it first appeared on our coinage. And in the 1950s, it was adopted as our national motto. And we do have "God" referred to in our pledge. I just have a concern that we're getting a little too close to being too, too much religion in, in, in the, in the government setting. I, we have a diverse community, diverse nation, and, you know, I, I'm not sure what it says to people that don't share the faith that we have. And would other type of, you know, community members that don't share the same faith would expect the same treatment? And I just think we might be taking this a step too far, and I do understand that there's other jurisdictions that have. I just think, you know, from, from, coming from my background, which is a really diverse religious backgrounds, and, you know, growing up as a kid in Hawaii, we have different terms for our, our gods, different peoples do. And I, I don't know if I could, you know, and I appreciate donations going to, for, for the display, that, that's good. But I, I, I think it opens up a can of worms that it, it would be hard to treat everybody the same. So I'm a, I, I don't think I could support the resolution as written. I think we could acknowledge that it is the national motto, it's on our money and the history of it. But to go much further than that, I, I have concerns, but with all...
Supervisor Dela Cruz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Being, being Christian all my life, and my parents forcing me to grow up church, I, I do know the value of, "In God We Trust". But at the same time, I understand, being in government, sometimes we've got to make sure we, we, there's a line between separation. Notwithstanding that information, I, I would support Supervisor Hernandez's position to approve the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I, as Supervisor Batel has stated, and I've spent a lot of time researching this, talking to different people, and I think too much time. So what are we deciding on today? We're not creating anything. This is something that exists today. It's our national motto. It's on our money. Every day when we do the Pledge of Allegiance, it's "One Nation Under God". So talking about what we're speaking of at this point in time about "In God We Trust", it is the right thing to do. We need to bring it to closure with Peter's, I would say, bold stance of bringing it forward. It's, it wasn't the easiest thing that was brought forward. There was people that agreed and people that disagreed when I was talking with people. But I will stand by what, what my fellow supervisor has brought forth and agree with this national motto.
Supervisor Gillo?
Wow, you guys, this was a tough one for me, I got to tell you. I, like you all said, it's, it's interesting. We make multimillion dollar decisions. We make decisions that affect everybody's life every day. And, I mean, we're just talking in closed session, obviously, I'm not going to give up anything, but he saw it on the agenda for negotiating with all of our unions. And this one kept me up at night, made me think, made me reflect, made me talk to a lot of my advisors. One of them happens to be Malcolm McFale, which I'm sure you know really well. And it, it's, it's interesting. So personally, I support the national motto 100%. I mean, I would love to have a resolution passed today. I'd love to ask the chair if I could actually put my name on that resolution and sign it as well, and hang that in my office at home, at, at my office, and be proud that I supported the national motto. This is not something that I'm looking at on my computer. This is something that I know from my heart. 343 firefighters died tomorrow, less than 12 hours from now, New York City time. 71 police officers, 55 military officials, and almost 3,000 individuals passed away. So bringing this up on the day before that even complicated this issue even more for me. And it's been an emotional journey for me to reflect and think about all this, because on the surface, I, I, everything I said is very sincere. I, I've, I've taken many oaths of office, excuse me, and I was a police officer for a long time, and I swore to uphold and defend the Constitution. And I, I can't support this today in the fashion that it's in, but I can support a resolution to support our national motto.
Mr. Chair, and I appreciate Supervisor Gillo's sentiment, I really do. I, I have so much respect for what he just said. Just to clarify a bit, you know, in reading the resolution, there's nothing religious about it. The reality is, is it's very patriotic in focus. If you look at the legal precedent, there, everything accord, you know, and this is all vetted through county council. The county council has literally vetted the, the details, making sure that it didn't consider that context of religion. It actually excluded it, and the focus was patriotic. And according to the legal precedent, the supports are there for any litigation that says you can't do this. So according to the current, according to the current resolution, there is no, you know, we have, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Barbara, but we have a very strong case that this is, this doesn't, this doesn't violate any legal parameters that you...
Yes, it's, it's based upon precedent that would support that the board would be adopting it for, you know, the historic and patriotic, patriotic purposes. It's not religious. Anybody can believe in the national motto without regard to religion.
Yep, and...
How many different cities and counties currently have this motto?
I believe there's over 130 in California and 600 some in the nation.
So that, that's what I was going to mention, Mr. Chair, is there's 136 cities and counties. There's a total of around 800 across the country that support this. And ultimately, there's been, there's even a firm that's willing to defend us in case someone tries to bring forward an issue of suit. So the reality is, is this is a pretty strong case, as long as we keep it within that context. And I appreciate Supervisor Batel's mentioning that I am a man of faith. It's, it's not relative to this proceeding. It's actually irrelevant in that sense, because the reality is, is this is, this focus is really to establish a sense of unity and patriotism as a legal precedent has, has supported. Right, I'm here to defend us as a community and us as a country, and ultimately, us as a board of supervisors representing our county.
Any other comments?
I make a motion to approve item 24, or item 34, I'm sorry, adopting a resolution authorizing the display of the national motto, "In God We Trust", and delegate the authority, which is a very key caveat, to accept donations, so this is not publicly funded.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Let's do a roll call. Start with Janet.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. No.
You guys swayed me, I'm going to say yes.
Four, one. Motion passes.
Let me tell you, it was a hard one, saying no to the other.
We're, we're going to move the last one till next week, or next week, next meeting?
No, we're going to, if, if it's okay with the board, we would like to go ahead and, and bring this item back in our fourth quarter report. So when we actually bring our fourth quarter report, it'll actually be encompassed in that report.
Not in the overtime?
Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Oh, I need to capture some people to talk...